Calling into session, the June 6th, 2023, meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District Committee. We don't often have this out, so we've got to use it while we can. We begin with public comment, so we'd like to take this in stages. We just talked a little bit about it at the table, make sure the tables still go with this, that we might invite everyone who has public comment that does not, that is not referring to the budget discussion for tonight, but regarding anything else, so that we can then get into the presentations and the work of it, and we will have further public comment regarding the actual budget discussion, just before we're engaging in that, so that it's fresh for everyone. So is there anyone here in person who would like to make public comment on something other than the budget? Please, stand up, we need your, ah, setting the stage. For tonight, we have a lot of people here and presumably online as well. We are sticking to our two-minute limit, and as usual, we've asked our student representative, because nobody's going to be mad at him when his ringer goes off, to be our keeper of the time.
He's good at that.
And he is good at that, so when he's ready, we just need a name and address and town, if you wish to speak.
Two minutes.
On the clock.
Ready?
Yes.
Jonathan, they want some lame Manchester man. Thank you so much. I know you'll be speaking a little bit about reorganization regarding the school committee, possibly regearing the chair. I don't, whatever the result is of the budget tonight, whatever it's decided, I know that coming down the future, this is going to be more of a discussion every single year, for the next two at least, probably. I really think we should consider, we voted Annalyn in last year with her financial background, her knowledge, she's done a wonderful job, Sarah did before, Shannon, I've known them all. I think financially, I know school budgets and businesses are very different from a budgetary standpoint, but that deeper knowledge of finance, bond, all that stuff, I really hope that we can consider taking a little bit of a different direction and having somebody head the school committee that has a little bit more of a people financial understanding that can work with that, and all of these guys, so I recommend Annalyn as the chair for the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comment? Name and address, please.
I'm Caroline, well, Manchester. I just want to follow up to that comment. I don't think it's very appropriate to be public, no offense, Donna, that's a decision that the school committee should debate, that said she opened that floor. I totally support consistency for the chair, especially in this next year, we need somebody who knows what's been happening and can, you know, continue that forward, but that's really amongst all of you to decide, not us.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person? This is not budget. Yes, please, thank you.
Also speaking in relation to the chair, and Wendy Banks at 44th Street. I wanted to put a couple of criteria on the table, not in favor of one person or another, but also to kind of echo, like, we need someone who's going to bring people together, to build community, so whoever you choose, who's going to reach across the aisle, who is going to invite people to the conversation, we need that so badly in our communities, both communities right now, and whoever's future chair, whoever's chosen, like, please consider that. And then to, who is going to go to bat for our schools and our communities in a meaningful way? We really also need that in our communities right now. So, just two criteria, in my mind, that I wanted to share in my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person wish to make public comment? Is there anyone online who would wish to make public comment? If so, please put your name and address in the chat. Is there anyone in the chat, Maria? If there's anyone on the phone online who would like to make public comment?
Are there many people online, because I'm not able to get online.
Forty-three.
Okay, so yes.
We have somebody online confirmed that you can hear us.
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't, can't get into the chat, though. Oh, wait a minute. Here it is.
Are you trying to do so?
I am right now.
Would you like to just say your name and address and make your comment?
Sure. Karen Bennett, 28, Lincoln Street, Manchester. I have two comments. The first one is in support of Anna as well, she is extremely intelligent, she's a CFO, she has lots of experience, I realize it's not, you know, something that's decided by the public, but just in support of her as a chair. And then the second comment that I have is, I heard a rumor that the school board has hired a PR firm, and I'm curious if that's just a rumor, and if it's not, how much did we pay? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else online right now? Thank you, first. Is there anyone else trying to make public comment in the chat currently? Okay, so, hearing no other public comment online, I will close public comment, but rather than wait all through of this, would you like to address that right now, or would you like me? Go ahead.
Sure. We contracted with John Guilfoyle at, in October or November of this year, not specifically for the school committee, but for the school district as a whole, to help us with everything from crisis communications, to publication of good news and work. I think you've seen an increase in press releases around student accomplishments this year, they are helping us with that. Fifteen thousand dollar contract.
Annual. Annually, okay. All right, then, with that, we will close public comment for now, thank you very much. This is my opportunity to give the chairperson's report, and my recent ones have been rather brief, so I am going to take a moment or two, to, I actually prepared my words this time, which is unusual. So, starting off with what I've been doing since the last meeting, as I often do report, I have been answering emails, a lot of emails. If you're here, you've probably received an answer to an email from me, specifically, and I'll report out on, on the data on those later on. Also, the day after our public hearing, joined Pam and Diego for a question and answer session for our high school students. Ask their questions and try to understand what they were hearing the night before, what, what's really going on. We have some students here who were at that, and, and I thought that the questions were really thoughtful and intelligent and valuable, and really a good reflection on trying to understand the situation, not trying to advocate, they really took the opportunity to ask the questions about the things they wanted to know, and I was really impressed with that. Also have been taking input from present and past stakeholders, which has been incredibly helpful, knowing that we are, none of us here has been in this situation before, that are elected here. I'm an Ivy, are a different, different story, but none of us elected officials have been in this. There's been some of the good stuff. Graduation was last week, I got to shake the hands of each graduate and really celebrate that moment, it was hot as blazes up on that stage, and, and we did it and enjoyed it, and it was really a wonderful thing. And tonight, hosting the retiree reception just before this, honoring the teachers who have been serving here so diligently and working for many years in our district and letting, letting them shine for a moment in their retire, in their retirement, it was really wonderful experience for all of us. Beyond that, I've been contemplating, so, I've been serving as chair for a year now, the first meeting in June, for those who don't know, is per district policy, the time that we take a moment to reorganize leadership and subcommittees if necessary, and so I've been taking some time to contemplate on what that means. This has been a really busy year, there's a definite learning curve to this role, and I did not have the luxury of time to ease right in, or an extensive period of watching others, though I did have some excellent role models for a couple of years before that. I've made missteps along the way, just like everyone, there are things that I look back now and say, I wish I could have said that differently, I wish I could have done this differently, perhaps if we had structured this differently, we might have had a different outcome. But I always come back to this stick, and if there are teachers in the room, you know what this stick is. So, last year, at the start of the school year, one of the opportunities that the chairperson has is to speak and attend, speak at and attend the day before school starts, or, you know, in the couple of days before school starts, the big meeting of all of the teachers in the whole district, and it was really wonderful. And following that, there was a training, I just love hearing myself twice.
Just checking the sound.
Following that, sorry, was an activity with, well, presentation and interactive activities with Michael Leitman, who, who has been working as a leadership coach with the district for a couple of years now, and he asked us to put on these little sticks, kind of our mantra, or what, what it is we care about in what we do, and of course, this is all the teacher's time, not my time, you know, so I'm trying to stay back and not get involved in them and not put them out of their comfort zone, but I wrote, "Serve with integrity," and that is what I have kept with me in my school committee bag, and I come back to it every single time. So even through the missteps, even through the difficulties, I have served with integrity. So whatever happens tonight, if there are people who feel that a change needs to be made, and the will of the committee is that, I know I have served with integrity, I know that I do the right things at the, for the right reasons, when I can, and when I know how, at the best time. But it's been chaotic, and we're in a chaotic time, so that's to be expected. I look for patterns in chaos, and what I've seen as a pattern, not, not really the big-picture pattern I'm talking about of the finances right now, but I'm talking about the annual pattern that I've witnessed for four cycles now of the budget, and how I've seen it play out, is that we, we generally start with really good intentions, all of the players, we all want to do this in a happy uplifting way, and we want to do it, and we do for a while, and then, when it starts to get to be crunch time, the emotions start to run high, and things start to become more real, and things, we get a little chippy, right? We get a little, little testy sometimes, and it gets a little bit more difficult, but at the very, very end, they usually come together for the best, even if it doesn't look like it right then, but I'm seeing that pattern, this year's no different. Everyone involved has had good intentions, everyone involved, all the hundreds of emails that I have here, everyone who cares about this has done so with good intentions, and we've all tried to fix this in our different ways, and it's gotten messy and emotional because it's important, but now we're here, and I will say that at least in the last week or so, I have seen a shift in understanding, a shift in willingness to hear other sides and alternate viewpoints, a willingness to choose how we communicate in a way that might be less inflammatory and more collaborative and open to inviting in, which is important, and I've seen really, really effective conversations in our meetings. We're, we're actually having productive, effective conversations where we're getting to some stuff, we don't always come with an outcome yet, but we're getting to the stuff. And so right now, we're facing a fundamental misalignment between what our communities, and I did use a plural intentionally, value in education, and the ability of both our communities.
Sorry, there's a.
It's two links.
The link in the, that is embedded in the agenda is not working, the link that is on our homepage is working.
The link on the agenda takes you to the homepage.
Right, but there's two meetings, one is our Monday meeting, that link doesn't work, and that's the top, everyone sees that first, and it's clicking on it.
That's why I just took it on the wrong, and scrolled down to the.
Meeting on the.
Monday.
Okay. I also, if you're on, I just posted.
I'm not on, but my friend in the chat, but I know that the board is selecting assets to get on, so just.
They're on.
It's.
Now they're on now.
Yeah.
Thank you. So after that brief intermission, what I'm saying is that we're facing a fundamental misalignment between what our communities, plural, both communities, value in education, and the ability of our communities to fund it the way things are currently structured. It's come to the point where there's nothing left to do but fix this. It's Essex right now that's feeling the pinch of the apportionment, it's been Manchester in the past, since it's that way, we can tell that this is perhaps cyclical, and it's probably going to shift back again. So, I really do believe that right now, we are positioned to finally address this bigger issue, so that neither community is sitting in the hot seat down the line. There's always going to be healthy tension between, between the responsibility to taxpayers and the desires of a high-functioning school district, and that's appropriate and healthy, but we need to solve this bigger problem, and we're actually positioned to do it, we have enough public awareness and interest, we have willingness from three separate groups, two towns and the district. And I have in mind a process for a path forward that we can talk about later tonight, there actually is a way to do this, but importantly, it is, we're going to require us, us seven, to elevate what we do. And I've spent the last year learning this role and seeing, seeing how I can rely on the structure of what I know is allowable and correct, to get to a point where you can then look at options. We're there now, I'm there now, I feel that way. So it's time for us to take what we're learning and refine our process, and I know we don't lack ideas at this table, that is for sure. So I've said, I've said it before, the way we did things in the past is making way for how we'll do them in the future, and right now, we're in a messy middle, but we will come out the other side, and we're not going to allow this district to be destroyed, not by cuts to the program, and not by destroying the relationship, we're simply not going to do that, no matter what the rhetoric is out there right now. But the key is that this group needs to engage together as a body, not as individuals, not as small groups, we have to, together, understand all the issues, we have to, together, make the decisions, and we have to, together, act and advocate as a body. That's where, the way we used to do things, might not be what works for this time period, and we have to reconsider that. We've seen that the splintered approach doesn't allow us to all understand all of the things, and it makes it really difficult when we're all getting the emails and the phone calls and the contact. There's space for us to refine the way we do our work, so that we're promoting stability, and when we have stability, we can entertain all the new and creative ideas that are coming up, and let me tell you, some of the ideas are creative. Creative is a generous, kind, charitable statement, there are some really, there are some unusual ideas coming out of this, but we can entertain them and expect results, but we're the key. It has to be as a body. So as I reflect on the year behind me, and I'm looking to the year ahead, we'll have a chance to reorganize, now I'm about to hand over the gavel and do that. I will advocate for a path of stability and consistency, I think it's critical, but the will of the board will prevail, and because we only have any say or any power as a board, not as individual members, that's what we need to do. So I've enjoyed the challenge, the learning, and especially the relationships, I do hope to continue it, I'm one year into what is traditionally a two-year stint, but wherever we land, I will continue to serve with integrity, and that's my report after a year as chairperson. I will hand the gavel to Pam.
Get you to the wood side. I mean, I'll try.
I don't really need the gavel.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
It's the pumping circumstance of this, please.
Got to walk.
I'm going to try and say something, but I'll.
I don't know why we didn't have it.
It's not on here. Would you like to make a student comment?
It's okay with everyone.
We, we didn't have student comment on here, and it should have been before that.
It probably is, reorganization probably bumped it off the page, we're going to set up the agenda, so let's do the reorganization, and we'll post student comment. So we're at the annual reorganization, this is the time in which we discuss who will be the chair, co-chair, and we have at times done subcommittee appointments in the moment, and at times, the committee has determined that it was too much to handle on one night with a full agenda, and decided to put that into the summer, that's for the committee to decide. My job is to only ask for the first motion to nominate a chair for the 23, 24 school year.
Question, point of clarification, it, do you just take a nomination, or is it a motion that requires a motion and a second?
And take nominations.
Just nomination is just.
And then we'll.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yep. I want to make a motion.
Okay.
Which is different than what you're asking. I move that we, that we table this discussion and reconsider another summer session, reset, that was beautiful, so I want to acknowledge that, you just gave a really inspiring remarks, and if school committee isn't your thing, you probably have a future as a motivator. That being said, I think that there are really important issues confronting us tonight, the public is really engaged in where this budget is going, and I know there's probably a lot to be said about how we, where we go with our leadership, and some discussions to be had, and I think we are doing a disservice if we don't prioritize our budget discussions, we don't know how long it will take tonight.
You literally disappeared, right?
So I would even consider making a second motion, that we add a summer session, if we think we needed an additional session, which is something I know nobody wants to do, but we run out of time on a regular basis, and so that's my motion, I move that we table this discussion until after we have recommended.
You're going to pull up your pants.
The motion to table the discussion, discussion on the motion to the table.
You have the ticket? Do you have money to get a snack? Okay.
Worth a shot.
My thinking is that I, I agree with putting off the rest of reorganization, like hesitation, specifically with regard to the chair, is that I feel like we need the stability, and I feel like people need to know who the point person is as we go through this process, and who the point person will continue to be while we see the process unfold.
Could we add a meeting in two weeks?
No, alternative is to reorganize the agenda, so we put the budget first, and the reorg later.
I don't think we have, my, my two cents on this is, oh, I can't talk.
Well, I mean, you can, but you don't have the reorganization, you don't have the agenda reorganization until we process through the motion.
Right.
So there's a, there's a motion to table, and there is no second.
Right.
Okay, so that motion is going to fall aside. Jake, are you making a new motion?
I will make a motion to reorganize the agenda, so that our reorg is after the budget.
Is there a second to reorganizing the agenda? Okay, discussion about reorganizing the agenda to place reorganization of the school committee leadership at the end of our agenda tonight.
I think that we're going to be, maybe touched. Very tired after the.
That's my point, we're pushing off the, the consideration of the budget, the thing that we really need to consider for a leadership discussion, I, yeah.
But now we're pushing off the leadership discussion to have a conversation about pushing off the discussion.
So, if everybody wants to have this conversation now, and I can't get apart for a second, but I, I honestly feel like we owe it to the public to be talking about the budget right now, and not our leadership.
I agree, and I think it's very important that the conversation we have tonight be started and moved forward with the leadership structure that we're going to have, whatever that outcome is, I, I get it, but if we were, yeah, that's, I really do feel that that, that's where we are.
Any further discussion on reorganizing the agenda to put leadership reorganization at the end of the agenda?
I'll just say, Kate, I, I hear you, but I think, Erica, you're right, that the budget has to take priority here today, and if we get to 11 o'clock tonight, and we haven't gotten to the leadership discussion, then let's do it two weeks from now, but at least we're not pushing off the budget discussion to 11 o'clock tonight.
I agree.
I think that it is, I, I think this is unwise. We're here, we're in it, we've had people make comment about it, even though we weren't planning on that, because that's not really a thing. I, I think we need to just do this thing.
I think it's also hard to have the budget conversation without knowing what the will of the committee is for the leadership, I feel like the, the will of the committee for the leadership could help guide that conversation.
We've had dozens of phone calls on, on the issue of leadership, I find it very distracting, and the ability to even focus on that is a distraction from what I really want to be focusing on, so I don't feel like I've given enough thought to how to do this well, so I apologize for that, and we'll, and then move on and go with the, the will of the committee and endeavor to cast a vote or abstain, so let's do this.
All right, so let's close out the motion on the floor, which is to reorganize the agenda. So all in favor of reorganizing the agenda to place school committee reorganization at the end, say yeah.
All right.
All opposed.
I'm missing. Before.
Hold three of four.
So do I remain chairperson until tonight?
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right. Moving forward, consent agenda, we have the acceptance of warrants for vouchers, 1050, oh, wait a minute, we were going to do student report, we were going to add student report back in, sorry.
There needs to be a motion for that.
There doesn't, you know why? Because I currently get to actually.
Nice, okay. Um, how's it going, everyone? My name is Diego Sanson, I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm the student representative to the school committee, for those of you who haven't heard me speak at any of these meetings, or seen me for the first time, um, so I, I first want to talk about the climate in the school over the past, I don't know, month, maybe, give or take, three, four weeks, I'm sure it's been a tense few weeks for everyone in the audience here, parents, students, any observers, um, but I kind of want to speak on, on the students and the teachers atmosphere, and kind of how we're feeling right now. I, I first want to say that it's been an uncertain time, and it's really been a distraction to our learning, and it's been very difficult to, I guess, focus on, at least for me, focus on things in class when I'm thinking about this a lot, I, I care a lot about it, and it's something that's important to me. It's been tense, and the future's uncertain, and I, I won't go into that a lot, because you already heard this in emails, and the students that presented at the last school committee meeting, but I first want to give you all a reminder that I know it might seem like we're two different towns at school committee, and on Facebook, and on your texts, and whatever, but in school, we're one, we're one group of people, we're not Manchester and Essex, we're together, we're the Hornets, it's kind of cliche, but we're together, we're one thing, and I think it's unfortunate when we see these outside influences of the budget and of townspeople, kind of starting to divide the group of one that we are in school. I see it more and more, and I've never seen this before, in my three years in Manchester, like, I think there is starting, there's like a, a little bit of a divide and a little bit of uneasiness between the both towns, and I think that there's hostility, especially towards Manchester, you know, towards Essex, and I think that's really unfortunate. The second point I want to make, and I guess this is maybe a suggestion, is that no matter what the leadership is going forward, I mean, we obviously don't know right now, maybe we'll know at the end of the meeting, I don't know, um, but I just want to remind you that the decisions you make now, it's not really a solution to a longer-term problem, and although I'm the representative for the current students, I'd like to think that I'm also the representative for the future students of Manchester Essex, and I think that whatever budget decision you make, and I trust that you will make the right one, I just want you to keep in mind that there is a larger problem at hand here, and there are two different parties that are involved in this, so I think that whatever you do tonight, I would try to keep in mind that will probably come back to this next year as well, and through the three years that I've done this, and I don't want to sound like some like jaded, like experienced person, because I'm like a seventeen-year-old kid, but for the little time that I have done this, I've seen patterns, and I've seen repetition, and I've noticed that at the beginning of the year, everything is fine, and then at the end of the year, everyone seems to care about the same problems that we're seeing year after year. So I would like to, I would like to suggest to all of you to find a long-term solution to the problems that we're facing, not a short-term one that is just going to put a Band-Aid on, on the bigger problem. So I guess it's my suggestion, it wasn't the most coherent one, but just think about the future, think about the things that you say, think about how it's going to impact the students, and that's pretty much it, that's what I want to say.
You've earned it. Thank you. We do not have subcommittee reports tonight, so we will skip that and move to superintendent's report. Oh, see, this is why we consent agenda, we need to have these things all on the same page. Consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes warrants for vouchers 1064, 1065, and 1066, there are no minutes with this meeting packet. Is there a motion?
Before we make one, may I just let you know that voucher 1064 is staying the same in total, we had a financial software issue where it was assigned to the wrong funding bank account, it had to be corrected, in doing so, we had to delete 1064, it became 1068, so we're now dealing with 1065, six, and eight.
Got it.
There is no seven.
Yep.
And 1068 is exactly as 1064 in financial matters, it's, it's a student activity transfer that needs to be assigned to the correct school.
Got it.
So I apologize for that error, and I probably want to get the right record for the minutes, thank you.
Thank you. So, entertaining, a motion for consent agenda for warrants for the vouchers 1065, 1066, and 1068, with the record reflecting that there is no 1067, is there a motion?
So, my.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, consent agenda passes. Now we skip the subcommittee reports and move on to the superintendent's report. Okay, consent agenda passes. Now we skip the subcommittee reports and move on to the superintendent's report.
The bulk of my work has been focused on the budget. So I'll have lots of comments and, um, information to share a little later in the program. Just wanted to, um, express gratitude, um, for, um, those who put together the high school graduation. It was a fabulous ceremony, um, and well, and efficient, efficiently run, um, to get us in. Enjoy our time and out before any threat of rain. So it was really a beautiful outdoor ceremony. And there's just a lot of great things going on at this time of year around the district. We had our civics fair. It was the second year in a row that they were able to run that last night. Talent show with Essex, um, packed house, lots of, lots of positive energy. And we have, uh, moving on ceremonies coming up for memorial, um, on Thursday, Essex and middle school, um, to follow at the beginning of next week. So we're closing out the year, um, and for all our conversation about, uh, numbers in the future, there's still an incredible amount of really fun, upbeat, good, positive, forward-thinking work going on. So I just want to, um, thank Diego and the staff for keeping things moving forward and focused on learning to the extent that they can while we go through this disruptive period.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to continued business, we have, uh, municipal special counsel here with us. Would you like to join us at the table?
He's gonna be dialing.
Online? Oh, online.
We'll see if he's here. I sent him a message. That'd be here just yet.
Okay, should we rearrange?
Yeah.
Go to the auditor's report.
Oh. He's on his way in, so he should be here in a second. Yeah, we can go, I think, to the auditor report.
I think, I think just let Mina jump in and let's take care of this.
Okay, great. It's just be another second.
Are there any way we can see the screen?
I will turn down the lights.
I will change the, uh.
He's on his way in.
Wait for it.
Did you tell him? Make sure he's choosing tonight's date.
I sent him.
Oh, is that Mina?
Yes, hello, I'm here.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it is.
I don't think we can hear him.
Yeah, not yet. We can't hear you yet. If you can hear us, but we're gonna unmute you in just a second. Yeah, thank you. And that is him. Okay.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me now?
No, your audio is not working even though you're unmuted.
Hmm.
Do we have a speaker on?
Well, we've been able to hear other people when they jump in.
Trying to.
Do you want to try one more time?
Yes, is this possible?
No, unfortunately we can't, but you probably have a dial in. You can, oh, they can hear him and we cannot.
We can hear him.
So Chris might be right. It might be that we don't have the audio back on right here. So he's unmuted, but it might be a speaker that needs to get.
The owl just came back on through the lights. It was off before.
I haven't heard it. I'm trying again.
Do you try one more time, Mina?
Sure.
The owl is also not, um, broadcast, broadcasting in the room.
Is it not at the top there?
No, it is.
Yeah.
Can I just bear with us one more sec?
Sure.
You can hear us. No. No, because the people, well, he is now.
Yeah, because the thing on the top.
Yeah, but before the people on the, yeah, he got muted.
Yeah, I, I muted myself.
He's unmuted now.
Have you just had one of us unmuted?
The video keeps shutting down.
Can you ask me?
Want to give it a shot, Mina?
Um, yes, can you hear me now?
I can hear you on both. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Your channel, Chris.
Thank you. Welcome.
Great. All right. We're ready to go. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Um, and I, I don't want to mispronounce your last name. So McCarius, am I saying it correctly?
You got it. Yeah, it's a bunch of vowels most together.
Okay, attorney McCarius is joining us from Anderson and Krieger, uh, and we've talked at prior meetings about, um, our request, the school committee's request that we, um, bring on special town council or special district council in this case. Just to help us advise us on a couple of different issues as we've been going through related to both originally related to the turf field project, but then subsequently to what some of our requirements are.
Little louder for the people. Thank you.
What some of our requirements are as it relates to, um, the things that happen when a regional school district budget doesn't pass. We know we have a lot of, um, unique situations here with, you know, things happening one way in one town, things happening another way in another town. Um, town meetings being, you know, passed, but votes, the ballot not being passed. So, um, we really would just wanted to kind of bring in, uh, attorney McCarius to help guide us in terms of what that means for some of our decision-making, things that we've discussed. Since he's here, he can answer questions. I think the first, probably most pressing topic I would imagine would be the operating budget. And we had some questions about what happens if, um, we already have a, an amount, uh, through one article, um, at Essex Town Meeting that did pass excluding the override amount. And would we be able to just reduce the budget to that amount and then reduce proportionally based on the regional school district formula, the Manchester amount, without having to go back to town meeting? And so that was one of the questions of, would we need to go back to town meeting or could we just go off of that? Do the math and bring the numbers down and hit them some way. You could hit those assessments to the towns in all the different ways we're talking about between revenue and expense. Can we do that and, or do we need a town meeting? So that was one of the topics that came up and I think with no further ado, um, attorney McCarius, would you like to, uh, just explain to us, if I understand your position was that it, we do, it is advisable that we proceed with town meetings in both towns and maybe you can tell us a little bit about that.
Uh, sure, Avian, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for, uh, for having me by Zoom or by WebEx. I appreciate that. Uh, so the issue is under chapter 71, section 16B. Uh, there is a, a process and I'm sure you've heard about it to some degree now, so I won't go belabor it. But what happens when one town in a two-member district, uh, does not vote to approve an operating budget for a fiscal year? And there's a process to kind of go back through it. Um, the question is you have this unique situation in this case where, um, the town, one town did, uh, first, first things first, uh, unlike with, for instance, bond issuance and under the statute, there, uh, for a two-member district, both towns do have to actually have an affirmative vote. Uh, simply allowing a passage of time does not, uh, does not cause a vote by consent, uh, or, uh, you know, uh, by, because the time period lapsed. Uh, so the second question is, does Essex's, uh, prior vote, uh, Essex had two votes, as I understand it, or as, as we've seen. One that was within the levy limit, uh, plus a contingent vote outside the levy limit. And there is an argument one could make that that first vote within the levy limit still stands, um, and therefore that if you reduce the budget to exact, so that Essex's assessment was exactly that amount, uh, arguably that vote should stand. Um, it's a little bit of an untested theory and I think has, um, uh, I, I think the, is probably unlikely to be what is accepted by a court. Uh, what courts trying to make sense of a statute like this one that is, um, making sure that voters at town meetings are expressing their intent and that their intent is heard, um, are cautious not to, um, kind of create counterfactuals that weren't there before. And in this case, a reduced budget, um, has a couple of implications. Uh, one, voters, uh, both Manchester and Essex Town Meeting that approved the larger budget may have different feelings about the reduced budget. They may support it, they may not. Um, those who supported it at Essex Town Meeting, knowing there was a contingent piece, may have done so expecting the contingent piece to also pass outside the levy limit or not. And so I, I think there are very good arguments that could be made, uh, against allowing that piece to stand. Uh, furthermore, I think you would really only be able to even make that argument if you were at exactly the same number, if you were a penny above or below the prior assessment that was in that contingent vote, you would have to revote anyway. So for those reasons, it, it's certainly legally, uh, safer and more appropriate, uh, and less, less risky, I guess, um, to, um, to have a vote of both town meetings, um, on a reduced number if that's where you go.
Of course.
Great. Thank you. And I'm not gonna, I, even though I introduced the attorney, I kind of don't want to run this conversation, so I'm gonna hand it over to you.
So can I, do we want to get through all of it or do you want us to stop and ask questions about these on the way?
I would suggest just asking the question, we'll see, deals with each topic.
Okay, I think we're probably gonna ask, we might ask the same question, that did we not have an email exchange that has somewhat different? You weren't? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I think, um, in the first section that you mentioned about the bond, we need two towns to vote, right?
Well, I think the bond issue is gonna be a separate topic and we are, if we have time, we can definitely get to, and that was one thing.
I have a question about that.
Yeah, right. His comments right now are just on the aftermath of the override.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay, yeah.
He did just make a comment about bond issue.
Yeah.
He did, he did. So if we want, we can just have, uh, ask him to summarize where we're at with the bond issuance as well. If we want to do that, hear his whole presentation, then ask questions. If your questions are interlinked.
Yeah.
Please tell me what would be best for you.
I have a question specifically about this, the town meeting part of it.
Yeah.
Um, and I might be misinterpreting this, but I might, um, ask anyone who else was on the email chain. It, my understanding is that, um, that perhaps the town of Essex has some differing information that doesn't, that it does not require an affirmative vote, but maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. So are you saying that we do require an affirmative vote and that the passage of time does not stand in for that? Or am I missing?
I, I just want to make sure we're clear, um, on, on the operating piece. And I also want to clarify what I meant on the, on the bonding piece and why it's different in a second. Um, just so there's no misunderstanding. Uh, it is my understanding that in, in the past, some, that there may have been a time when simply the passage of time was allowed to stand in. I think there's an argument that if there is a rejected budget and the amount is reduced to exactly, or let me back up, a, a situation like this where there was a partially approved budget and then another part that was above the, the levy limit that was rejected. Um, there is an argument that that is enough and you wouldn't need to go back. However, our advice would be that, that there are, there are some risks with that because while that may protect, uh, the interests of those who voted and were comfortable with just that amount, it doesn't, uh, bring back into question, it doesn't sort of negate the possibility of a challenge for folks were for hoping for a higher budget, uh, for an even lower budget, et cetera. Um, it sort of sets, so I think a court could very well, uh, while I think that argument could makes, could work, um, I wouldn't be comfortable saying that it's ironclad. And so that's, that's where I was, uh, on that. It's not our recommendation. Uh, just with respect to the bond issue to avoid confusion, because I apologize if I, if I didn't mean to muddy the waters there. The statute under chapter 71, um, does have a difference in wording when it speaks about the authorization of a bond versus, um, or the, uh, versus the authorization of the budget. It's, uh, at least as far as the statute goes, and we can get to how it applies to the turf field issue later. So just to keep this topic separate. Uh, the statute contemplates explicitly that there might be a, um, an opportunity for a town to simply not vote, not to take a bond issuance to town meeting and let that pass that way. Leaving aside your regional agreement for a second. On the other hand, for an operating budget, it is clear that the statute anticipates affirmative votes by each town, um, as opposed to just the opportunity for, the opportunity to vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, please. I, you may be getting to this, so if I'm jumping ahead, um, you can ignore it, but you mentioned the affirmative votes of both towns. And if we were to find ourselves in a position where we had differing results between the two towns, can you talk through how that plays out?
Uh, sure. So if, if you take a reduced budget and you have sort of the return to each town meeting for a second vote, um, that sets up, and, and one, let's say one town approves it, one doesn't, or both disapprove it, um, you then can have the joint meeting. And so I don't know if you've talked about this process yet, but you, you might have already, but this is where there would be a joint meeting, uh, the two towns, um, town, the two, the town meetings of both towns, um, that requires 14 days' notice. The select boards of both towns meet in joint session to appoint a joint moderator. Um, the budget, uh, then gets approved by the joint meeting of the two towns, um, as essentially acting as a, as a super meeting of, of the whole district. Um, and the, um, the warrant language at that point is controlled by this committee. You'd effectively be the ones putting, putting that language in for that special meeting. That'd be the only thing in front of it, in front of the joint meeting.
Go ahead. Is that a simple majority vote or a super majority?
Uh, it's a good question. Um, I just want to confirm this, but I believe that that, um, is simple, is a simple majority. But let me just double check that. I just want to look at my notes, but I think that's right. This is a simple majority.
And that's in person, that the votes taken at town meeting as opposed to ballot?
Correct, correct. It's at town meeting as opposed to ballot.
Anyone else have questions on this one? You committed?
Um, questions about the timing, and maybe you mentioned it, I, I didn't hear. So if we were to go into this, um, once the school committee approves today, um, what if a version of budget passed forward? What is the number of the days that within that timeframe, both towns need to vote? And then what is within that number of the time, of the days that if it fails, the super, um, meeting needs to take place?
Uh, sure. So the, the two town meetings, um, happen, uh, within, so if you, you, uh, pass a revised budget, let's say tonight, um, the school committee then has seven days to submit that budget to the select board chairs, finance committee chairs, and the treasurers of each town. Um, from there, each town has 45 days, um, to act on the revised budgets, um, during that, that period. Um, if either one rejects it, um, that's when you would have the, uh, the joint meeting. Uh, the notice for that is, has to be at least 14 days in advance. The statute is unfortunately not entirely clear on just how much time, you know, for instance, how much time you can wait after rejection of the budget to get to that next piece. Uh, that is, I think largely because the, either the legislator wasn't contemplating it fully or because, uh, typically you'd be running up against the beginning of the fiscal year anyway. So it's kind of anticipated that'd be quick. So the 14-day notice. So the fourteen day notice is a minimum notice, but you could provide additional time. Um and then um the you you get from there to um to to the that joint meeting and and following that, you kind of either keep going in the process as uh again, if you could, uh if it if it doesn't work, if you end the fiscal year without a budget, uh you then have uh you're you're using the budget from the prior fiscal year as a guide. Uh your expenditures can be um no less than, or you're you're authorized to spend no less than one twelfth of the budget every month. Um and the process kind of keeps repeating itself until a budget is reached. Um that I say no less than because the this is kind of the the endpoint on this is that the Department of Education, uh D D S E can actually approve um a higher expenditure. So that may come in handy, for instance, if certain costs are front-loaded, the district can make the request that certain costs be put in um earlier in that. Um but there is a bit of a fiscal management oversight that happens uh that's more than usual by the Commissioner of Education at that point.
So Nina, I don't, not even sure if this is your area of expertise, but because it doesn't really have uh anything to do with the school committee, but I think people might be interested if you have knowledge in this area. So um one of our member towns to uh to fund the school district or to fund their town budget requested an override, right? Um the school district can't ever request an override. It's always up to the towns how they want to uh fund their portion of the approved budget. So is it still the same case after a super town meeting that, you know, it's it's still up to the towns how they would like to fund their portion of that newly approved school district budget? But is there any way that it would, you know, continue to be blocked somehow, or like it was this time, right? Because it was, it was a strange situation, right? Because budget was approved at both town meetings, there was an override approved at a town meeting, and then there was a ballot vote where it wasn't approved, right? So what does that process look like that far out? If you have knowledge in that area.
Sure, a- and uh I'll I'll start with just just to uh give you a little bit about my background. I I I am town council in Concord and Lexington and and ha- and work with some of our town council team in other towns. So actually, we we deal with the override issue probably more frequently than we deal with with this unique process I that I uh I know this was probably, you you'd rather not deal with this every year either. Uh the the short answer is um it there is still a role for the override, but it's different um if you get to that joint meeting. Part of the reason I emphasized before that if you get to the joint meeting, the school committee is the one putting forward what the question is on the warrant. Um so the school committee doesn't have to make it contingent, and it's not up to each town to decide, you know, quote unquote, how to to decide how to fund it. As as you put it, um it is now up to the school committee to present it as a budget. That being said, uh the interaction between chapter seventy-one, which governs your financial, your your budgeting process, and uh Prop two and a half um still exists, and what Prop two and a half i- is designed to do is to ensure that there is a ballot vote and at certain occasions, including when a town exceeds its levy limit. And the way that I uh would just would think of this is the town meeting might essentially be signing the purchase and sale agreement like you would on a house. Uh but the override piece for one town or another, let's say you're joint buyers of of a property, one of those buyers may not have enough cash and may need to go get a mortgage. That's what that override kind of does at that point. So if you, if either town passes by its levy limit, gets, you know, has a an assessment that exceeds its levy limit, they would still have to go to get an override to do that. It wouldn't affect the fact, in our view, that your budget is set, but it would affect that that town's ability to pay for it. So in other words, you'd have an approved budget, but you'd have an issue of whether or not um you that that town has the means to pay it within that fiscal year, or whether they have to either go back to their regular town meeting, um call or as in call a special town meeting of just that town um to adjust their overall budget, to make cuts elsewhere, to fit in the new budget, uh go to an override, and if it doesn't pass, maybe then go back to a town meeting. So it could get complicated for that town if they're above the levy limit and can't can't get the, you know, quote unquote, the mortgage as I, as I, you know, to use that analogy uh from the voters.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Next topic. I don't see any more questions. So, okay.
Okay. So if there aren't any more questions, the other question, uh sorry, on the operating budget, moving to the next topic that we had, the school committee had requested that we get clarification on related to the process that was initiated, I believe it was a March seventh school committee vote, where the school committee uh authorized debt issuance for the Turfield project. Um and um that um we went through the next step where we gave the required notice within seven days, and at that point, uh is our understanding, based on what we communicated, that um the uh towns would have the option, but not the requirement to vote um to approve that. Uh I believe the um statute, although but Attorney McCarron can correct me if I'm mistaken, is sixty days during which time they have the opportunity to vote or not. This is, I'm just recapping the history, um not the legal requirements. And uh whereas the regional agreement um has language in it that talks about it shall be the district practice to get an affirmative vote um and within a certain amount of time, uh which has only happened in Manchester, but not happened in Essex. So what becomes of that potential conflict, and how should that be addressed, and what does the school committee need to know? So with that, um Attorney McCarron, could you please just uh fill us in your understanding um of of how that unfolds?
Sure. Uh so with respect to that issue, um the statute, uh again, the relevant uh portion here is chapter seventy-one, section sixteen, and section um sixteen has enumerated some of the the powers of regional school districts. It has two separate provisions, sixteen D and sixteen N, that provide for how um how a regional school district can incur debt. Um one way uh is um s- is to have the uh the vote from the school committee, and as long as neither of the two towns uh disapproves, um the debt um can be approved by a ma- ma- majority of the registered voters in each member town at a special election. Um and then the uh so excuse me, that's uh sixteen D, simply if they don't approve. Uh sixteen N is is a special election. I apologize. Uh I I went a little bit too too far there. Uh sixteen N is a special election. Those are the two methods set out in the statute. Uh your regional agreement does, as um was just mentioned, have this region, has this additional piece that says that it is the practice of the district uh to actually seek an affirmative vote, notwithstanding the fact that you um are, you you know, the statute doesn't require it. The uh the question for a court would be, if this were ever litigated, is is that binding? Um and I think the better reading of the statute is that that language is not binding uh for a couple of reasons. Uh one, um the statute contemplates only two pr- two methods uh for how debt gets approved, and the uh a sort of a requiring an affirmative vote at both town meetings is not one of those two methods. Um there's also sections within the the powers, enumerated powers of a school committee that do refer to things that can be in agreement, i- i- and this is not one of those issues. Um so I think that the better reading of the statute is that this um third method, really, is uh not uh not contemplated by the statute and not a method that's allowed by the statute. And masters of courts do tend to read municipal finance and and school finance laws pretty strictly uh for, you know, for as exactly as they're worded um as a starting point. The second thing is the use of the words in the in the agreement is itself, let's just say this was an agreement or a contract between two parties, leaving aside all other municipal finance laws uh for a second. Uh if in a contract you said, every time we approve uh a project, we will, it will be our practice to do X, uh one could very easily argue that using words like that, it is our practice, suggests that it's not binding, it is something we endeavor to do, we sort of aim to do, but won't necessarily be bound to do um if not otherwise required. Um so again, I think the better reading is that the district's borrowing is already authorized. I I'm aware of, however, of a counterargument, um putting more emphasis on that language um by special town council for Essex. And the reason I think it's important to bring that up is you're talking here about a borrowing authorization. And while I think there are very good arguments, um I think the better arguments is that your borrowing is fully authorized. Uh as you have prob- may have heard in the past from your bond counsel or bond counsel through uh uh staff and others, um the standard that bond counsel and I and I, full disclosure, we are not, uh we don't issue bond opinions. That's not our role um typically have to meet, is a much higher one than um town council or or we, and you're advising you, are tell, where we can say it's the better argument or the more likely reading of it. Um they are held to a very high standard, where really it's whether any reasonable court could differ. Um and it is, I think, because of the language in your agreement, not beyond the the po- realm of possibility that a court could differ on that and take the same view that special counsel has in Essex. Uh well, even though I I disagree with that reading, I don't think it's it's entirely implausible um that it be accepted.
Yeah, questions? Go ahead.
So what happens when the two legal councils have different opinions? And we are
Yeah.
So what, what do we do next?
Uh it's it's a good question. Um because this is borrowing, I think it puts you in a situation that is uh a bit more difficult. If this were a matter of a a regular vote, uh you know, uh up the op- the operational budget, let's say, let's say the same issue is coming up in that context. Um you would, you know, be taking the reasonable risk of proceeding um subject to somebody, a group of ten taxpayers, for instance, or one of the towns challenging it, and you'd be getting the advice from us, and I think you're, you know, the position is that this is already approved is a stronger one. And you'd have to decide whether that risk is worth taking or not. I think the difficulty here and where the bond issuance is is at issue is is whether you could get an opi- an unqualified opinion that that is um um the only plausible reading of the statute is is what I described as what I, you know, so what I think is sort of the appropriate reading. Um and like I said, I I I can uh, you know, respectfully disagree with that it's the the right reading, but I think Essex's special town council raises a point that's not implausible that a court would accept, um which presents a higher risk of, if you were to go to to the bond market with this. And uh whether or not there's an avenue around that, I I think um I I think is a a a tougher question. And so I think it, you know, th- there is some risk of trying to proceed without having um an affirmative vote. From from Essex, I should say.
But there are any other questions? I mean, we're gonna have to deliberate about what this all means in the context of the budget tonight, for sure. But I wanna make sure we're getting any questions answered.
So those, there's no standard on a timeframe in which that vote needs to be held?
Um, well, you know, again, I I would say the standard is what's in the statute. That's why the statute does require, i- it sort of accounts for this possibility by say, by requiring towns to either vote or or forever hold their peace, right? Um but I think the the fact that there is, that what I can't discount altogether is a risk if you're issuing a bond, that um bond issuers may may question um the lack of a vote because of the language in your agreement.
Is is there an expiration on the vote taken by Manchester in April?
Um in this case, I do not believe there is, again, assuming that the bond issuance does not ma- change materially. Um again, I I wanna be, I'm I'm being extra careful, because I wanna make sure that the, that, you know, bond counsel may may have eventual bond counsel, whoever has to has to sort of certify us at the end, may wanna think about that. Uh my understanding has always been with other borrowing authorizations, that there is no particular expiration date, but there is sort of a staleness issue that comes up at some point, where if the world has changed enough that that borrowing no longer makes sense. Uh we've sometimes had, for some of our towns, borrowing authorizations that are a year or more old, and bond counsel and we have had to think about, does this still make sense? Would would town meeting expect that the vote that they made to still matter? If you're not changing any aspect of the project, you're not changing, and the only thing that's happening is that the concerns that caused um that that are being raised by Essex are are um need to be addressed and are addressed, then I think you probably are in a place where you're more likely than not to still have a binding vote for Ma- Manchester.
Can I just, can I just, just for context purposes, this has come of that particular question, and please, Attorney McCarron, correct me if anything I'm stating is in conflict with your legal understanding, but just in our communities, with the two building projects that we've done, those authorizations were voted here and then by uh the towns, and then they stood for some time while we determined when would be the appropriate time to borrow. And um just for this building, for example, it was a forty-nine million dollar authorization. We never end up borrowing in or close to that, because we got seventeen million from MSBA. So we had that seventeen million dollar authorization stand for several years, until such time where we said, hey, it's time to deal with Memorial. Let's make a formal vote, remind, you know, people that we're taking that down, so nobody who can worry that we're just gonna go on some borrowing spree, which we obviously would never do, but it just helps to allay people's concerns. So we had multiple years there where those authorizations did stand. I don't know if you feel like that's different for some reason in this case.
No, I I don't. I think, you know, the the, you know, keeping in mind that the reason to to even worry about that staleness issue is, again, if a bond issuer is looking at this and thinking, am I going to lend money to a community or a, you know, or to a district? And somebody is going to challenge and say, wait a minute, you know, no one even remembers what we voted on, and this what, you know, they can't possibly be bound by it. Um and again, you know, if the circumstances haven't materially changed, um you know, it's expected that projects take time, and financing is often a a mix of different funding sources and requires time to assemble. So I think for capital projects, it's not unusual at all for bond authorizations to last multiple years.
And for context on this, because our plan has always been to float this with reserve use anyway to get through to the end of the project and not borrow until the end, working within that sixty-day window for Essex's fall town meeting to move forward shouldn't be a a conflict for us, if that's the path we go.
Uh I I would think not. No, I think that that makes sense, and especially, you know, in this case, I would also add um that you're doing this arguably in abundance of caution to avoid any argument that the language in your um in your agreement trumps the statutory language um and sort of sort of take away that issue altogether. So if anything, you're being extra careful where you could have moved forward without it.
I think I saw, Erica, did you have a question? I'm gonna make sure I'm looking this one, too.
So I I hear your point on how it could impact, um how bond counsel could look at it, the lack of an affirmative vote differently. Um apart from that, in your experience, and this is a more finance question than a legal question, but is there also the potential that um the bond issuer would look at it as a riskier investment? And therefore, the interest rate would be higher, or do you think that the the voting aspect of this doesn't really weigh on evaluating the riskiness of the debt?
Uh I I would have to defer that question, to be honest. I um I I think whatever riskiness there is really comes down to the legal issue. Um how underwriters or bond issuers um figure out their interest rates, I think, is is above my pay grade or or separate from my pay. Um how underwriters or bond issuers uh figure out their interest rates, I think, is is above my pay grade or or separate from my pay grade, I should say, just not what I'm qualified to say.
Fair enough. Um Teresa.
Yeah.
Your question though, so if Essex were to vote on this, but so my understanding is that Essex may not have any desire to finance this through debt. So if Essex at their town meeting decided to fund fields in a different way and therefore bypass the need to have any type of vote on a bond issuance. Where does that leave us?
So can I, can I explain this and then let Avi stop me or Pam stop me or or someone if that's the case, because I think it's a pretty easy.
Questions to the attorney at this point.
Does he, yeah, does he have the context on this? Okay.
I I don't know if he wanted to provide the context, but I I would direct questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Does that make sense?
I I I think so, so I I think um the short answer is if you have, as I understand it, Essex here has has um stated that a desire to not fund this through their own debt and and sort of cash fund their portion of it. Um Avi used it an example a a couple of minutes ago of you you can always have more authorized in borrowing than um than you have, uh than you actually have to use. Um if Essex decides that, you know what, after all, we are not going to take this to another town meeting, we understa- you know, that was uh an objection we had, but we are withdrawing that objection. Um I think what that would mean is essentially the two towns and the district would be reading the statute and their agreement in the same way. And they'd be more explicitly waiving their um desire to have a a of a an affirmative vote on the authorization. Um remember, at the end of the day, that the authorization is for the district to borrow. What each um tech- community does to pay for its share of the borrowing costs, the debt service, et cetera, is again up to the how they finance it, um that they data aren't necessarily taking, they're not, they're not, not, it's just not necessarily taking the borrowing in the name of the towns.
Any other questions about this? Go ahead.
I don't know if this the, if this is related or if it is even appropriate, but um so if the borrowing is really only for the town of Manchester. At the point when we presented, like their portion of it, when we voted through in Manchester, it's really the Manchester portion. So then my question is, then why doesn't Manchester town in Manchester borrow? Why would the district borrow and then we have to involve both towns? Is that even a legit question?
So that's our, that one's on us, I think.
Well, yeah, I'll defer to you because I think this has to do with the fin- the actual financing of the particular project, but I can, I can weigh in afterwards.
What we believed was the common strategy going forward was to preserve reserves to manage Essex Elementary School and seek financing for the fields. With both towns determining how they wanted to use, how how they wanted to address their portion of the payment of that debt. Just like the attorney said, that seemed to be a misunderstanding, um which has kind of led to trying to resolve whether or not the the vote of the school committee and the affirmative vote at Manchester Town Meeting and then the passage of time puts us in a position of borrowing. So we did it because the intent wasn't to use reserves, but was to fund it over time. So the school was going out.
We were always, we were always going to use reserves. The borrowing was to replace the reserves. Right? Technical.
Because, yes, because we were going to have action from both towns in a timely way to start the project.
Correct, yes.
Right, I I would actually just alter it, I don't think generally the goal is to replace reserves. I would just, eh eh yes, you could say it that way, I think we looked at it as uh two or three month cash flow. So that the projects could be done, understanding that we want these fields ready for students. And that it would take time to uh go through the bor- borrowing process. It was not, I I think it's different than saying our goal was to borrow money to boost up our reserves. It was more to have it be funded by the towns through borrowing or a cash payment. So that we're not, so we're keeping our reserves for our cap- our five-year capital plan and for all the other things. And and we will be willing to provide two to three months cash flow instead of using a bond anticipation note, which is a short-term debt instrument.
Well, that's what I meant, you know, I don't know, I'm using a, using a bond.
Yeah.
You know, borrow and maybe the project comes in under and then we have this extra borrowing money that we didn't need. It's a lot of different reasons.
Yeah.
Last question, um so uh if I understand it correctly, that um even though there is differences in the special council opinions. Um there might be a risk might be low if we were to bar. Or we eh have a different opinion. So I get that we were, we did with a misunderstanding, but now we know. So what if we forego this, I mean, we keep it, what if we forego this uh this uh bond approval already? But now we have Manchester to bond and prove, that way we don't need Essex's approval, right? If Manchester were to bond that.
Manchester. Do we know?
It's portion of Brook Street Field. They own a portion of it and we own a portion of it.
But district's borrowing, but what if Manchester borrows? That's what I'm saying.
I I'm getting what you're saying.
And that way we don't have to go, we don't need both towns approval.
Well, we would still, so the answer to that question is, I see it financially is if we are going to be having one town pay for a portion of the one point two million, that is the district obligation.
Yeah.
You would need both towns to pay for it in some manner. And so if Manchester wanted to borrow, then you would need Essex to say, here's how we're going to pay for it. I think your question is, could you switch out the borrower?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that does sound very clean-cut and intuitive. I think one, the only difference is that we are the ones who are entering into the contract, so I don't know if there's any reason, I just don't know. So I think that could be something that we could look into and pursue. Either way, we would need to know that there was a commitment from both communities, which right now we don't have. So um I think that would be step one, we can certainly pursue the other issue of whether there's any reason why the borrower has to be one or the other, I don't know. But what I was informed about as we pursued the initial plan was that the whole reason we want the school committee to authorize one point six million, which includes a share that isn't even the district share, is because we are entering into the contract, we've done the RFP, we've done the bidding, and we need, we can't be paying a contractor unless we have a revenue appropriation from the school committee to say, yes, we're gonna pay for it in this manner. So I think you, I think the answer is you would be undoing all of that, which could be very complex. But I, since I'm not an attorney on procurement and appropriations, I would need to get a follow-up on that, I think, so.
And can I ask you a question, Anna, wh- what do you mean we know, what 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 do we know, what did you mean by that?
So Pam was saying that there was misunderstanding about the borrowing, so now we know there was a misunderstanding. So we know that Manchester side is a certainty, we want to, and Manchester wants to have the option whether to borrow or to use the cash, but either way it was approved. But I think right now the 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 last part is tied with Essex's approval, but to bypass that, just like you said, what if Manchester just borrowed for their portion, but you're saying is.
Regardless of what we do, we can't bypass that portion because it's a one point two million dollar obligation. And we have eight hundred thousand approved, ready to go in Manchester. We have four hundred thousand from Essex that we, we don't know what is gonna happen, so we have to solve that.
We have to know, yeah.
Regardless of whether Manchester becomes the borrower, which I think would be difficult to do or not, we still need to understanding what's happening with that four hundred thousand. Is that what you were trying to say?
Yeah, I was just confused about what we knew, because I'm, I I haven't heard anything officially like in writing of what Essex is going to do about it. Or I haven't seen it if we.
There is a legal council letter saying that they they disapprove.
All right, I I guess I just haven't seen it.
And I think we're gonna talk about this further in the context of the budget also, so maybe we can um work towards, if we have questions that we need to work through with uh the attorney at the moment. Do you have any other clarifying questions?
There's an email, maybe I missed it.
Uh ju- just to, if I could weigh in on that last point, I mean, just to put one pe- legal piece on it. And I don't think this is, I apologize, I don't know the members' names uh yet, but um what it was saying, it isn't um Manchester would still have to revote, of course, if they were to borrow themselves, because what they voted on was your borrowing. But yeah, I think that was clear, in case anyone was wondering that.
Thank you. Pam, Robbie, do you have anything that you think we're missing here that that is okay?
No, just probably is worth saying for people who may not be following this issue in depth is that um Highland Field is a direct school district asset, Brook Street Field is a shared asset between um the school district and the town of Manchester. So when they're talking about splitting the money, basically, we are, we went out as the lead on borrowing, so it could be evenly divided through the debt formula. But that's, that that's why there's a three-way conversation.
Okay, well, then I will say thank you very much for joining us and for the work you've done. Um we, of course, have the the questions of how this works within the budget and within our collaboration with our towns and how that best works. But it's definitely helpful to have the um clear answers from someone who does this um for a living and helps us have the the nitty-gritty details. So thank you very much.
Uh thank you for having me and um I I am around the rest of the evening if things come up, I'll I'll jump offline now, but um Avi knows how to find me.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was helpful.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Okay, moving on to the annual auditors report. Frank's ready is here, and if you'd like to come join us at the table, if we could find it, just bring your chair right up.
We also have Elizabeth Elizabeth Murphy, who's here from Powers and Solomon. And uh everyone, probably most of the people here remember Frank, who's uh been the partner on our engagement for uh several years. Elizabeth has been the lead auditor uh I think for the past several years and has been um the primary uh contact for the district. Um so uh in this space, you know, she has a lot of familiarity with our case. And I don't really want to um steal their thunder, so I'm going to um hand it over unless Pam, there's any.
Nope, fine introduction.
Okay, thank you for coming, thank you for being here. And for those in the audience, you know, we did distribute as part of this, it'll be part posted as a meeting minutes. Uh the audit reports from fiscal twenty-two, as well as our report on federal awards, as well as our annual uh management letter, as well as the audit of our report to the Department of Education. Uh our end-of-year financial report, which is the report that, you know, where we document where every penny goes and then goes into multiple avenues online for those who are interested in the people expenditure reports, et cetera. That kind of data all comes from that report, which also uh per uh Department of Education regulation has to get audited by an outside accounting firm. So those are the four reports that all fall under their purview. Um and without further ado, I'll hand it over.
Anything that you want to start off with, are you going or? Thank you, um I just wanted to start off with some uh required audit communications, this is a little bit formal, but uh I'll make it uh as quick as I can. Um as the auditors, we're responsible for planning and performing the audit to uh make sure that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Management is responsible for selecting the significant accounting policies that are used uh to prepare the financial statements, and those can be found in note one of the financial statements, there are no new accounting policies that were implemented in just eight two thousand twenty-two. And the application of existing policies have not changed. Uh accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements and may involve management's knowledge and experience about our current and future events. And uh we, the most significant ones relate to the uh other post-employment benefits liability, the net pension liability, uh the depreciation of fixed assets and um the sickening vacation liability. We review the key factors and assumptions that go into those um estimates, and we found them all to be uh reasonable in relationship to the financial statement for the whole. Uh as far as any difficulties encountered while performing the audit, I'm happy to report that we did not have any difficulties in dealing with management while performing the audit. On the contrary, we had very good cooperation and assistance, and I would like to thank everyone. The superintendent, the assistant director of finance, the treasurer, and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we had throughout the course of the audit. And one thing that I know the district has been trying to um improve on over the last several years is just its readiness for the audit and its timeliness of financial reporting, the reporting that's done outside to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um the financial statement reporting and and other reporting that's done. Uh then we've uh noticed the difference in the last few years in that readiness that we've noticed significant improvement. And I just thought that that was something that's worth mentioning uh to this group at this meeting. Um we had commented in the management letter several years ago about the accountant staff and considering um you know, reviewing the positions and the assignments and and the staffing levels and comparing it with other similar-sized districts and um you know, considering, you know, additional support for the accounting office. And that, I think, is something that the the school committee took seriously and took to heart, and there has been some additional staffing that's been added, and I think that all of that is starting to, you know, show its benefits with um some of the um the uh increased uh reporting and and readiness for the audit, just great. Audit adjustments uh are defined by our professional standards as a proposed correction of the financial statements. In our judgment, that may not have been detected or corrected except by our auditing procedures. And I'm happy to report that there were no such audit adjustments uh that were required during the course of the audit. Disagreements with management uh can be a matter uh whether whether or not resolved uh to our satisfaction concerning uh financial accounting, reporting or auditing. It could be significant to the financial statements of the auditor's report. And I'm happy to report that we had no such disagreements with management. So those are the uh formal communications that I wanted to share with you that are required. And then um I want to talk a little bit about the audit and timing and uh give you some financial highlights and the results of the audit. So we uh completed our preliminary work back in uh late May, which is uh consistent with the timing that we've done that the past. And we're basically at that time auditing everything that we can, it's before year-end, but there's still a lot of work that we can do to try to get head start on our year-end procedure, we're back out with the year-end work at the end of October. Uh we actually came out on Halloween, I believe. Um and at that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends that we might have, completing all of our year-end audit procedures. And um like I said, the district was well-prepared and put together a great package for us with all the information that we requested. And that's really important for us to be able to try to get through the audit efficiently and effectively. Uh one of the most uh important areas for us is audit, for the audit, and considered to be like the highest risk area in the audit is cash. Cash is susceptible to um, you know, theft and um it's it's a risky asset. And so one of the most important controls of the cash is that you have a monthly reconciliation process in place so that if there are any questions or anything that come up, that you can deal with them right away and resolve them. And um that's something that the district has done a great job with, making sure that they're staying on top of those cash reconciliations, we review them in great detail, we found them all to be complete and accurate and uh no issues with that. So that's really a great thing to see. Uh for financial highlights, general fund fund balance total uh two point eight million dollars, which is right in line with what it was in the prior year. Within that, uh you had a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars that's restricted to debt service. You have another three hundred eighty-nine thousand that's committed for the capital stabilization fund, where you've set some money aside for capital purposes. Another three hundred twenty-one was assigned for encumbrances, and that's just uh open POs at the end of the year that carry over. Uh because you haven't received the goods and services until the next year, but you have a commitment to use that money. And uh then you had a hu- five hundred twenty thousand dollars of E and D that was voted to be used for the uh two thousand twenty-three operating budget. And that left you with one point three million dollars of unassigned fund balance, and that's basically the starting point for your E and D calculation. Uh it's about four percent of your expenditures and um your E and D came in at one point two million dollars, so pretty close, a little bit under, there are different things that they add and subtract to that calculation to get to your final number. And uh you're about four hundred forty-one thousand dollars under the uh five percent limit that you're required to keep. So you're good from that standpoint, can't have to return any money back. Uh operating results on a budgetary basis uh resulted in an increase of twenty-seven thousand dollars, so you did a little bit better than breakeven. Uh you had a planned decrease of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which was related to E and D, three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of E and D that was voted upon the twenty-two budget. And you used fifteen thousand dollars of the uh debt reserve as well. Uh your revenues came in eighty-seven thousand dollars more than budgeted, so that offset the decrease from the E and D. And uh your expenditures came in thirty-seven thousand under budget, and that was mainly related to non-salary expenditures. And uh overall, those results indicate to us that you have a structurally sound budget that's well-planned and that you have good budgetary controls in place to to monitor and make sure that the spending is uh in line with what uh has been appropriated. monitor and make sure that the spending is in line with what has been appropriated. Your school choice funds, you've got a balance of $1.5 million in there and that's down about $100,000 from the prior year, so pretty consistent. You used about $546,000 to fund other student services, health insurance and programs with other districts. And that money is available for expenditure by the school committee without further appropriation. Other significant items, debt, the long-term debt total $44.8 million. You issued another $3.2 million during the year and you redeemed $2.5. Short-term debt, you had $1.3 million outstanding to temporarily fund the memorial school project. And other post-employment benefits liability, your liability decreased by $1.4 million, which is always a good thing. Total $22.6 million. I had a discount rate of seven and a half percent, which is the same as the prior year, so that had no impact on the liability. And then you were considered to be 15.3% funded at the end of the year, which is up from the prior year, which was 13.3%. So you are making progress in funding that liability, which is great. You have been more aggressively funding it, I would say, than most school districts and you're one of the first to start funding it. So a lot of others are getting on board now and you kind of set the path for that. The trust fund, you contributed another $530,000 into the trust, the net position and the trust total $4.1 million at the end of the year. So you are building up a pretty substantial balance in the trust now. The net pension liability decreased by $900,000 and totaled $5 million. And you're part of the Essex Regional Retirement System. Your pension for people that are not, non-teachers and any of them that's not eligible to be in the mass teachers retirement system. Essex is about 67% funded, which is up 60% in the prior year. So they're doing a little bit better and that's even while reducing the discount rate from 7.3% down to 7%. Most of the retirement systems did well from a return on investments for calendar year 21, which is what this is reporting on. And things are going to look a little bit different for calendar year 22. Expecting to see some pretty substantial losses, so the numbers probably are not going to look so good next year. And in summary, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion, best you can get. Means your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Financial performance, as I mentioned, indicates a sound budgetary process and effective budgetary controls. The information that we received was accurate and there are no internal control deficiencies that we noted. And all of our interactions were professional and courteous. So that's really what I wanted to say about the financial statement audit. I can go over the report on federal awards really quick in the management letter. Report on federal awards is required for entities that expense more than $750,000 in federal funds in a given fiscal year. The district expended $1.4 million. $557,000 of that related to the child nutrition program. $545,000 related to the special education program. $113,000, those disaster grants, and that's really COVID expense that was funded by the Federal Department of Emergency Management. And then about another $185,000 for other various education grants. We have to go through a process to determine which funds we need to audit each year. And so for 22, we were required to audit the child nutrition cluster and the special education cluster. And we had very good results. We didn't have any findings. We didn't have any question costs. We didn't have any internal control deficiencies or any modifications of opinions or anything like that on compliance. So that was a clean report, best result you can get on that. And the last report that you have is the management letter. And I always like to mention that this is critical in nature, but it's not designed to highlight the things that you do well. But what's important to know, like I previously mentioned, there's no significant material weaknesses. These comments are things that we had put in here just to try to provide value and try to provide you with some ideas for improvements and best practices, those types of things. There was a comment in there related to reassessing the organizational structure, roles and responsibilities. And that was kind of tied into what I was talking about upfront, where you've added a payroll and purchasing clerk position. And it's still in the process of hiring for that. And so that, in addition to some other reorganization that you've done in prior years, we're going to put you in a good spot in terms of the staffing and in your business office. And so we're considering that to be resolved since the position has been appropriated and they're currently recruiting for it. And then the last comment relates to adopting financial policies and procedures. That one has been in here for a little bit. I know that that's something that you've been giving some thought to, but again, it's best practice to have them that, you know, there's several different like benefits to having them, provide stability and continuity, outlive their creators, define limits on actions staff may take, support good bond ratings, promote long-term and strategic thinking. So there's a lot of good things that come from having documented financial policies. Some of the areas that you might want to consider a policy related to, you know, how much excess and deficiency you want to maintain, what you want to maintain for fund balance levels, the capital stabilization fund, your OPEB fund. Personal use of credit card is another one that we see. So those are some things that we think from best practice standpoint, picks up to add to your policy. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm guessing we probably have some questions. I would just like to start by saying the management letter is really very interesting to me and, and right now, this is very short, but even in the few years that I've been here, this wasn't this short. It was longer. And so that is positive improvement that we're not adding to the concerns. We're actually working down on that. And I think that that speaks well to how seriously you guys have taken these things as well. I know my, I've been beating the very boring drum for a while now about about some of these financial policies, especially, you know, at what point are we going to consider using OPEB funds to, you know, fun part, you know, looking forward at when we're going to actually do that. So I think that we're actually in a position where we have to really truly address some of these in particular this year because of the critical financial position we're in right now. And our policy subcommittee did get a start on that this past year with it. So that's great. Do we have any questions from the committee at this time? Go ahead.
So you mentioned about the policies from the prior year comment in the management report and some of the things that you highlighted about the motion for the cars, PO requirements and whatnot. But other than those key ones, we do, you do feel comfortable about our other financial policies and we do present some, what's your general sense about where we are compared to other?
Yeah, I think that you're, you're following the Masbo standards like for policies. Yeah, I think those have been better than those. We don't have any issues or concerns with those at all.
And question, one of your, the points that you mentioned in the audit is that you guys are only auditing the financial internal control, right? Because some auditors also audit the internal control for, like, you know, general operation, like, you know, HR, IT, things like that. Did you guys look at that area too, or just strictly finance?
We're, the scope of our audit is giving an opinion on the financial statements. So that's really, we're looking at internal controls around financial reporting.
Okay.
Yep.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions at this time for? Please go ahead.
One of our town partners has asked us to look into the timing of certifying E and D. Is that something you look at and or have a?
Well, we assist with preparation of the information that gets sent into the revenue and I think that's all kind of tied to, you know, more timely reporting and trying to do things and have things ready earlier and like the staffing, looking at the, you know, the roles and responsibilities in the business office and determining if there's enough staff to try to expedite the reporting, including the E and D, the reporting to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the end-of-year financial report, financial statements for the audit. So it's all kind of tied together. Where the hope is that with this new, you know, reorganizing and restructuring and adding some additional staff, that it's going to help to expedite all of that. And I think that there was progress in all of those areas this year.
Is the payroll position still open?
It is.
It is still. There's a part-time position that was part of the restructuring.
There are a lot of people listening, been looking for a part-time payroll position for some time now.
But you still, you guys are still okay with segregation of duties, even though there's one position vacant?
Segregate that position, in my opinion, although the auditors are here, so you can, you can ask them if they would characterize differently. My understanding is that that does not impact segregation of duties, which is very important. The segregation of duties that we do have is having the treasurer handle all of the financials and, sorry, the bank accounts and the cash, whereas our department handles accounting. And so that's very different when we need to make a payroll happen to your point about, it's more like having AP. So we have, we do the AP and the payroll. Both of those items still get sent to the treasurer to do a transfer into the accounts payable account to pay those bills or into the payroll account to pay those bills. So that's where the treasurer touches the cash. We don't touch that. So that segregation is a bright red line. We don't, we don't mess with.
Frank, you have any commentary as a third party?
Yeah, I mean, segregation of duties can be challenging in a small office and you, you do the best you can and the bigger the offices, the more people that you have, the more you can spread things out. And you try to have, you know, as many checks and balances as you can that are practical. But I agree with Abby. I mean, they, the treasurer does handle the cash, which is great. That's one of the most important things to segregate is the actual difficulty of the cash from those that are recording the transactions on the books.
Isn't Charlie retiring?
Our treasurer is the.
Why don't we say yes, we're going to bring it to the school committee for action in a timeline, but we're going to spend a lot of time if we start that conversation. But yes, he is, he would like to retire soon.
I just thought he said he was going to retire.
Any other questions for the auditing team? Well, then I will thank you very much for joining us and for staying this late to do so and for your continued work and service. And just as a public service announcement, correct me if I'm wrong, but our, all of our financial audits are available online on the district website. If you go to district, finance and operations, the audits are all there. And I do recommend taking a look back at prior years to see the progress that has taken place here. It's really helpful. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you and to see everybody again.
Okay.
Can we turn the lights on?
Yeah. Yeah, let's turn the lights on. We are about to move on to the, we're almost there, you guys. We're getting there. We really are, like, we really are. But right now, we're going to move on to the spring budget to actuals and transfers. We do need to make a, take a vote on transferring these. But I do need to take a final break. So I will be momentarily. And you're in charge.
All right.
It's pretty good.
Why don't we just, can we just do like a file break, like a three-minute, yeah, quick run break?
Yes.
Candy break?
Please help yourself. Yeah, please help yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Although it will go to other employees, you know, tomorrow.
It's the problem.
Okay, thank you. I hope you all enjoyed your, your break and your snacks and things, right? And the lights. All right, moving on to the last couple pieces before we discuss the reconsideration budget for fiscal '24. Anna just asked a good question. Why don't we reorganize things so that the people who are here to talk about next year's budget can actually get to that? Anna just asked a good question. Why don't we reorganize things so that the people who are here to talk about next year's budget can actually get to that? Um, the reason this is structured the way it is, is so that everybody here paying attention has all the inputs. The municipal council information is critical about this conversation moving forward. Having the auditors report to help us understand where we are is critical to having that moving forward, as is. The budget to actuals for where we are right now. So, so thanks for bearing with us, but this is intentional. For this. So Abby, would you like to?
Sure.
Take us through?
And is there anything you want to start with before I get into that? Sorry.
She's got a full mouth.
Piece of cheese or something.
Well, I think, you know, as Frank mentioned, we're trying to put in place some new processes and Anna encouraged us to increase our budget to actual reporting. We typically did it at. Then probably in the November, December timeframe in preparation for putting together the tentative budget and then again at the end of the year to execute transfers. So we went, went to a, we've got three times a year reporting system. So this is the last. And as you said, I think it does, it will give you a sense of what the budget looks like at the end of the year. In terms of expenditures and what's available and what some of the unexpected expenses are that can come our way. When we think we've actually wrapped up the budget and are ready to close up for the year. So, Abby?
Sure, thanks. And yeah, so uh this uh end of year forecast, it's still a forecast because we haven't closed the year, just to give you an example. Uh, you know, with large, I'm not projecting anything. But all this information will be posted. You know, we have, uh, we pay on a biweekly uh basis. It's twenty six payments throughout the year, fifty two weeks divided by two weeks. Um, and uh, as is very common in most school districts, uh, teacher payments. Paid five pays at the last uh day of school, which accounts for essentially pay that they would be otherwise getting over the course of the summer. It's all part of this year's fiscal obligation. So that's a large amount of spending that hasn't happened yet, for example. And so, you know, while we have a general sense of what's going to happen because of the way we handle modeling and forecasting and we have a, I think, a pretty good system in place. That's the reason why what we're calling today is still a forecast. There's still a decent amount of spending that, yes, still needs to happen. And uh, as we heard somebody mention, I think it was Frank Serati, the hours of Solomon, you do. Not uncommonly have some encumbrances, POs that are open at the June thirtieth date that you try to pay off as quickly as possible based on. What, you know, if that were in fact to be an obligation of current fiscal year, all this stuff. Gets part of the audit, so they check to make sure that the way it's done is legal and in accordance with our fiscal policy. So that's just a little bit about um why we're calling this a forecast typically, you know, uh, late in the summer. We're just about done with um all the ticking and tying. And as you heard, that's certainly been a process that we've accelerated over the past couple of years as we, as we built out our. Not really added FTE to our business department, but really just changed our procedures over time and just built a better infrastructure, including the forecasting. So um, the first thing I guess I would say is that um, there isn't really a lot of change in this forecast versus the January and the November forecast. As we know, eighty percent of what we do is um personnel and the benefits associated with those personnel when you look at our budget. And so one of the reasons why the November forecast is so important is because at that point, you know, let's say you're forecasting through October. You really know who has, who's here and who's going to be here for the year. Yes, there are some hourly positions that might change, but by and large, all the positions that are here, as we call them, full-time equivalents or FTEs and the salaries, that's really known. And so um, there's a smaller and smaller subset of things that are unknown if you go through the year. So by and large, aren't really a lot of surprises here. Uh, and so that's true for health insurance too. Remember, when we set a budget in the spring and have town meeting in the spring. Over the course of the summer, things change before, you know, you start the year. People might say, you know what, I'm moving to Michigan or I decided to retire, you know, I think you've heard certainly in the budget exercises. There have been new retirements that come out now. That is really very standard. Um, and so all of those things can turn into budget to actual changes, but typically by September and in October, you've got that staffing pretty locked down as well as the benefits. Who's on a benefits plan, who's not? So you really can forecast that out pretty well. So um, that's the first takeaway. Not a lot of changes that where you do have some changes. Uh, more commonly as you start to get some of the other line items um is in the operating expenses. So some of the big categories that, you know, we talk about are um utilities, for example, which has been a thematic area in our budget preparations out of district. Um, special education costs for tuitions and related transportations. Those are things that certainly change during the year. Remember, we're kind of, those are responsive constantly to student needs during the course of the year and that can change. So um, those are some of the changes and we talked about those. I think, big picture, where do we look to be ending? We look to be ending with savings that is very consistent with uh what we typically see. The amount of forecasted savings at this point is lower than where we were uh at the last update. That's really not unusual. As some of those smaller items that, you know, like hourly services or utilities, et cetera, start to play out. So for example, utilities, we, we had to increase the budget quite a bit uh because of the fact that um. On the good side, we uh entered into long-term contracts during the COVID downturn and we really jumped on those great rates and had a lot of savings there. When the economy was slow, but they eventually had to get renewed and unfortunately for us with the war uh in Ukraine, hitting supply costs everywhere. That really has been a pain point. We transferred it a hundred and eighty-five thousand in the fall. It turned out now that we're through the heating season, which you really don't know in the January forecast, you need this last forecast to see that because so much of your utility spending is in. The January, February and March timeframe that looks like uh we're looking to be another twenty thousand dollars that will be needed in that area. Just moving down to the bottom line. At this point, uh, the um total savings is around zero point seven percent of budget at two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, that's the forecast uh that we have. Which is down from two hundred and ninety-one percent of budget at the January forecast. Uh, not surprising there, as I mentioned.
Not two hundred and ninety-one percent of budget.
They say two hundred and nine, two hundred and ninety thousand comma, one percent of budget was the fall, sorry, the winter estimate, down at two hundred and twelve now. Uh, we do typically try to make sure knowing that we might have, let's say, half to a percent of budget maybe available at the end of the year. When we budget a subsequent year, we do typically assume that we would use that first and foremost to prepay um tuitions for special education. Knowing that those costs have increased. And so uh, we had a, I would say, uh, I won't even characterize it, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is in the fiscal twenty-four budget that we've been talking about for a while prior to all the changes as a prepayment amount. We have seen a couple of uh changes that we think will increase for fiscal twenty-four in the past couple of, I would say, several weeks to about a month and a half. So um, it would be my recommendation that we use that um available funding to do that. And so that's why I put in there a transfer request of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to take that one fifty to um. Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think that would be prudent, um, because right now we know we're talking about budget reductions. I don't think we want to be, you know, taking uh our budget conversations for fiscal twenty-four and adding, you know, that a hundred and thirty-four thousand to next year's request. I think this is a great way to deal with that and it's certainly a very common practice from most school districts. So I think that's really um the high level. I, there are, is a lot more detail here. I have a memo here for all folks who want to read and get into the detail, but. I'm not sure with all we have on the agenda tonight that it's worth going into more unless there are specific questions that you have about how things break down. For example, between personnel and operating expenses. As I mentioned, it's a very slight change since November on personnel.
And just for everyone paying attention, we do get this information in advance and we're able to review it in advance. Do we have questions at the table? Yeah.
Uh, questions about a hundred and thirty-three thousand, the tuition out summary thing.
Yeah.
So he uh, it's for two thousand and twenty-four potential to uh evolve, like you mentioned. So we are booking this in QI twenty-three, is it a cash basis? So we have to spend in the cash.
Uh, great question. So uh, it is, this is one of the rare exceptions of uh when you can spend money in a prior fiscal year for a future fiscal year expenditure. And so the Department of Education and Department of Revenue have created special stipulations for this because of the fact that tuitions can vary so much. Within a year that allows districts to do that. Main reason being is actually, I think the concept is that it helps to avoid surprises to taxpayers and having to call special town meetings when you have funding increases. So we actually would um increase the budget now. We would create purchase orders. And we would use those to pay those invoices as they came due. Typically, the, you, you try to do it for no more than three months with the encumbrances.
Uh, transportation, you took out a hundred thousand uh for this change, for this, this revised budget. Down to two hundred and twenty-two, which is um a little low compared to previous year, which is around three hundred K.
Yep.
So what's the, what happened this year?
Sure. So we went through a process where we have restructured our um bus service.
Yeah.
And um, we had on prior um forecast, the fact that we knew we were going to save money. I think we had a fifty thousand dollar savings in the budget based on the reduction. We ended up reducing two buses instead of one. And so we were able to save more the numbers because we are early in the year and we were also getting charged for additional charges related to um fuel surcharges. I made a note in the earlier transfer that I didn't feel comfortable recognizing the full amount because. I thought that it was not yet clear and that we were going to evaluate it. It turns out that in fact we are saving that money. Um, and the fuel surcharges have been small in comparison to the savings that we've done in about fifteen hundred dollars per month, for example, on fuel surcharges. Where as the total savings uh on bus services is about fifteen thousand. So that's how uh this has been able to materialize. It just essentially what I didn't feel comfortable. Taking that money down early in the year until I really had the visibility. This is the first time we've been able to make that much of a change.
Do you think two thousand and twenty-four for this budget line will be similar level than this two hundred and one thousand or would it go back to this?
No, I think that's, I'm glad you asked. You know, so the contractual rates are part of the RFP and bid. The only thing that varies is how many buses that you run. So the only thing that would change it is if we suddenly decided we wanted to run more buses or we felt like the. Oh, I will say that there have been issues in the past where people asked about restructuring and generally the, the thing you try not to do is to restructure. Such that kids are on buses for, you know, too long of a time. I think we're, we've restructured as much as we can, but I do not see any reason why it would go up next year. Short of the uh percentage increase that we put into the uh FY twenty-four budget.
It's already only one bus from the middle and high school in Manchester. I know that.
That's right, for Manchester, that's right.
Thirty-five to forty minutes for my daughter to go two miles.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right. And it's, I think that, that this, that can be a real head scratcher. And I would say that's another reason, for example, why, you know, I don't think that there's been a lot of money to be made on bus fees, for example. You know, typically, you know, we know we have to by statute provide service for people who are going further than um two miles. We go down to a mile and a half because of the reimbursement we get. So I, I think you're right. I think people start to question some of that benefit. I think we've stretched the financials as much as we can, I guess, is what I would say.
Logistic wise, um, because the two thousand and twenty-four budget, the um like the detailed line item that we presented back in March was based on the January revised budget, right, in November?
Say, say that one more time to fiscal.
The two thousand and twenty-four budget, when we did the line items, um, we budgeted based on the two, you know, the percentage, how much is. You know, the percent increase of the budget is based on the two thousand, uh, the November, the January budget, the revised.
I, I'm not sure I would say that, no. What we did was based on uh, number one, cost being staffing. What staffing do we have? What will happen to their salaries next year based on their step or scale changes in the COLA as well as um any changes in full-time equivalents that we've been talking about? Reduce this, reduce that. So it, it really isn't based on the January numbers at all. It's based on the headcount that we have that at the time. Uh, in November, when we really have the full payroll aligned. So the tentative budget is really the most important one for the twenty-four budget. However, if we know of changes after that time, we'll make tweaks. But that's um, that's not necessarily tweaks in the January forecast for this year. It might be, you know, someone's going to retire, et cetera. So that's for that. For health insurance, which is the next biggest cost, we do the same thing. We're able to see really in November, more or less where we're going to end this year. And what we saw at that time, and I know you, you've raised this, was that, you know, we had savings. And so based off of that, whatever growth rate, which is what we, I want to say debate have uh deliberated on at school committee level, what should the growth rate be? Has been off of that forecasted number through the end of the year. So no, um, we take a more uh conservative and, and, and um, I would say more precise, not even more conservative. We have all the information we have available goes into that. So we leave essentially no stone unturned.
Because I'm talking about a non-salary uh budget. So like, for example, two and twenty-four budget, I could establish a line, we'll budget at three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So if, if, if we think the, the buses is going to be stay at two hundred and twenty-two thousand, is that a potential savings of a hundred K that we can move somewhere else?
Yep, that, so that could be, so that it would be a good example where you might be able to have some savings. One of the things that's a factor there is how the reimbursement from the state comes in, because that amount has to offset that number. And right now we have a pretty healthy offset. Uh, you may remember from the transfers that we presented. I believe it was January or November, we talked about the potential for excess revenue from last year that reduces to this year. We have not budgeted in excess revenue for next year because we didn't know what that would be. So I would say that's certainly something we could look at, but I would not recommend taking that down at this point. I think it's a little early.
Clarifying question. So the state reimbursement is based on ridership?
Uh, yes.
So we can assume that if we've gone down a bus, we've gone down a ridership so that our state reimbursement will likely go down.
That's correct. So our next year reimbursement will be based off of this year and for that reason, a hundred percent, I agree, is why we had the number. Flat in the budget. It was, we could have brought it down further, but it was flat because we ended up getting it, you know, estimated extra revenue over our conservative estimate. I don't think it will be conservative next year, so. But I do think it's something we should, we should look at. It may show up as something that we have in November, so I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that one.
And can I ask the remaining line items in your budget, that the remaining twenty percent? Are those just projections that you, you know, grow those at a rate of three percent? I'm talking about your, your standard operating expenses.
How do we budget the other items?
Correct. Are, are they derived from, for instance, the, the January financials or the, again, from the beginning of the year?
Yeah, sure. So um, utilities, we try to track based on what we're seeing as the actuals coming through. And those forecasts and what we know about the changes in the contract. They're very seasonal. It can be a little challenging. Uh, that's an area why we have started to work with Power Options, who's our um, work with nonprofits and higher ed on um, on procurement and helping us to get bulk contracts. They have services that I think we could use more of. They've started to help us with some of that forecasting now. That's a, a slightly volatile, very seasonal area. The next area after that, transportation is pretty much contractual. However, special ed, transportation and special ed out of district tuitions, I'd say those are some of the next big areas. We do those on a, on a name by name basis. All the, you know, students that we think might need those services and what those likely um placements could be and what those could cost. So it's extremely granular, but it's also not something that you can uh have a high degree of certainty of what might change. And we've talked in prior budget cycles about what can change. Well, certainly, if you have a new resident come into town. Uh, who has that need, you're going to surface that and that might not even be a name you even knew about. Except the next level of uncertainty is around just student needs that might change during the course of a year. So I think those are some of the biggest areas and when we do budget, we talk about, you know, ninety-five percent of our costs are coming through. The following big areas, the last one being facilities. And in general, what do we do for facilities? We try to level fund and we've been trying to grab. The rung of where we were on the capital and we've fallen short of that. Unfortunately, we talked about our capital plan. That's where the, the small capital annual budget allocation for items that are probably, you know, ten thousand or under. We need those funds. The capital plan that we showed, shows that we are, we're underfunded. So I think those are the big categories. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Do you mind if I just put one quick clarification in? It's something we could put on a future agenda to go into greater detail. I just want to clarify, um, special education and student needs change throughout the year. It's not, it's not that simple. Um, there's a data-driven team process that determines whether a student is making progress and a change needs to be made to an individual education plan. Sometimes those plans, as we progress, progress monitor and convene with the team, including the parents, will change. The prescription of service for the student. So it's not. the prescription of service for the student. So it's not just simply, oh, we think this kid would be better served, you know, by going to landmark. It's a very lengthy process of data intake, data processing, team meetings, in a rewrite of the individual plan that may result in a service change, which is mandated by law.
Any other questions regarding the budget to actual or the transfers that we have as listed?
Great, thanks. So if that's the case, I'd love to ask if the school committee would support the transfer requests that we put forward here that are documented will help to bring our budget in line with our forecasted actual.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the transfers as shown and discussed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Anyone? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. The transfers are approved. Thank you for that and thank you for, um, I know it's a busy time to pull together yet another report, but but for also bringing that mid-year one, um, adding that in. It's it's a positive step for us. So thank you. We have a lot fewer questions today, having asked a million of them in January and November, so.
I'm not sure if the the board knows. This is just another FYI, seeing as we were talking about transportation. But I know there's a lot of comparison, comparative analysis going on. As a regional district, we're required to provide K twelve transportation, whereas single municipalities have the option to stop transportation at grade six and offer it as a direct fee for service. So in looking at comparisons, that may be why our transportation looks slightly different than an equally sized single municipal. That's also why we get reimburse.
So our final item before we get to the thing you're all actually here for is our OPEB trust annual district contribution.
Yeah, so um, I'm going to make this really brief because I feel for the people who come for budget and have had to listen to a lot of uh, things, which some people would say is like watching the paint dry, but I I I understand. But um we have the um, we have an OPEB trust fund. We talked about it. It's how we fund our future liabilities for our retiree healthcare. Retiree healthcare is mandated by statute. And um, as you heard, it's not been common practice for people to fund that. And they've kind of tended to look away. This is something that when we were going through our last uh revenue correction exercise and override request in fiscal sixteen, um, certainly people were asking, well, how can we fund um the school system and catch up for what had been constrained by Prop two and a half if we're not thinking down the road and multi-year processes. So just like now, we're kind of going through our multi-year uh capital plan to kind of really make sure we're looking at every potential liability that could come down the road. And Essex Elementary School did a V report. The OPEB process was part of that as well, because the numbers can be quite significant. So um, as part of that, every year, we just ask school committee to approve the transfer uh, which is budgeted in our budget documents, which then goes into a trust fund. The trust fund can only be used for that purpose. It can also be used to pay your annual retiree healthcare bills if you so choose. And that's one of the things we talked about. Whether or not we want to have a um a policy that would speak to when we might make that switch. So um, I'm just pulling up the actual number here for my report. But we, the number is based off of the formula that we have in the teacher's contract, where the teachers several years ago, through a collaborative process, agreed to essentially reduce benefits uh and cost to the district uh, both by having cheaper plans that had higher out-of-cost for the teachers as well as lower contribution rates from us as the employer, which meant a higher contribution rate from them. And that we would take that savings and rather than just spend it on any area of the budget, we would put it into a trust fund to make sure we were planning ahead for our OPEB liabilities. So based on the formulas of how much this year's savings have been, um, we have the uh request and I'm trying to find the actual number. I put, oh, it's in the budget to actual. Oh, it's right here. Give me ten seconds.
Is it the proposed final budget number?
Five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars would be the request to transfer into the OPEB trust fund. Those funds
Repeat that.
Five hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Those funds do get invested with the state pension reserve investment management board known as as PRIM, which handles all of the pension investing for state employees as well as mass teachers retirement system. Thereby taking all of our investment risk off of us and putting it within qualified professionals who handle this for a living. So that's the end of my short.
That was great. Okay, um, I move that we approve uh, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars for the OPEB trust annual district contribution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, I didn't know if your hand was up. Got it, got it. Uh, so all in favor, all opposed, all abstained, one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It passes. Excellent. I think we're ready for what you guys want. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question of the committee and then propose this. So um we have kind of multiple pieces to this, since we have invited the public comment to shift uh to just before this. Do we think it's helpful to have you do the very briefest version of the overview of these things before, in case it's answering questions that you actually have? And then we take public comment? Or do we want to assume that public comment is just going to be comments, not questions?
Um, that's open to the group thinking.
I know there's a lot of public comment at the meeting, um, the budget room. And I think that as a committee, we moved beyond some of the topics we're discussing at that meeting. So I I do want to save some time if people are here to rediscuss some of the cuts that we may not need to discuss all of that right now. I don't know how how we could get to that more effectively, but could we decide on what budgets are going to be considered tonight?
I don't know that we can do that.
By the compromise budget, if it's cut or not cut, maybe that will, that will help.
Right. Do you, are you prepared for a brief overview of what we're, we have ahead of us?
I am prepared. I will make it as brief as I can.
Shall we just do public comment, folks? Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm going to preface this by saying, as Erica just alluded to, um, if you saw my uh information that went out today. This is a a working meeting. We know people have comments. We know everyone has um opinions on this. What I would invite you to do is be very intentional about whether what you're about to comment is bringing something new to the conversation. If you are, we, alright, let me see. I have this many emails that tell me what people are in favor of. If your public comment is regarding prioritizing world language, prioritizing performing arts, I just want you to know we have that message. Um, I can't stop you from making a comment about it, but we do want to preserve the time here to do this. So I would like to invite people to understand again that we're going to have our timer ready. And if you, if anyone has public comment, um, I think maybe this time we'll start with online and then we will go to in person because then we will go straight into the deliberation. If you are online and would like to make a public comment about the fiscal twenty-four budget conversation specifically, then please put your name and address in the chat. Is there anybody in the chat? Okay. Audible.
Yes. To Miriam Bradford.
Oh, perfect. Got it, okay. Alright, so seeing nobody in the chat, I'm going to have had a request from Chairperson Perrine from the Essex Board of Selectmen to call into order because they are a posted meeting. So for Peter and Albert, if you're still online, if you could just unmute and let me know you're here so I can call us to order. We are all still here.
Up here as well, Peter.
Thank you. Do we have either from Essex or Manchester, any other town boards where this is a posted meeting for you that you need to call to order? Nope, okay, thank you. Okay, in person, is anyone here?
We have some online now.
We do now, okay.
I'm Miriam Bradford.
Okay. Miriam Bradford, your two minutes. Please unmute yourself and your two minutes begins.
Okay, I have no video because I have a janky iMac.
Please share your address.
Oh, sorry. Miriam Bradford, one twenty-eight Old Essex Road. Um, I just quickly wanted to urge the board uh to consider the teachers and the staff and um if there was any way in in this budget talk to really emphasize to the teachers and the staff, the commitment that you have to their longevity and to the importance that they have in our school district. Um, and uh, I don't know what that looks like. Um, I don't know if that means, you know, what commitments that means, but really just, I I see a lot of talk about the students and about the programming, but I do think it's important that through this process that we're also making sure that our staff and our and our teachers understand their value and how much we value them as well. That's all.
Thank you, and you are below time. Nicely done, Miriam. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chat currently?
There's not.
Okay, anyone on the phone that would like to unmute themselves? Okay, hearing none, we will close the chat and uh close the public comment from the virtual participants in person. Would anyone like to make public comment? Go ahead.
Um, so if you're supportive
Name and
Lindsay Bang, I'm at forty-four Street.
Thank you.
So I hope you'll give uh me or us a grace period on this time because I'm speaking on behalf of about six hundred people.
How many, how many minutes are you expecting?
Like two minutes and thirty seconds. Yeah, so if you are supportive of schools and help organize a letter of support or sign the letter of support, I invite you to stand with me for this public comment. You know, you know, anyone in the room who wants to stand, can stand. So we wanted to share the results of our letter of support with the school committee and we have updated the numbers as well uh, that we are distributing to you. So as of four P M. today, five hundred and ninety-one people have supported the following statement I'm going to read to you. You'll find those who have opted to share their names with you in uh the packet that this other Lindsay, my name's Lindsay, this is also Lindsay, is distributing to you. As of seven P M., we had six hundred people signing this letter. Okay, so the statement of support reads, we, the undersigned, wholeheartedly support the school committee in moving the current school budget out of crisis and into a long-term solution. We support a budget for current and future that fulfills the vision of the graduate as defined in the district strategic plan. I'm not going to read it to you. You all know it, right? Immediated budget process uniting the two towns in the district through thoughtful collaboration. And we are committed to maintaining excellence in our excellence in our school district because we know the strong schools are the foundation of strong communities. When given a choice between original budget and some form of a compromise, so these people didn't necessarily know which compromise budget you were voting on, but they knew that they didn't know that. Eighty-five percent of the total respondents support the original budget. Among Essex voters, eighty-one percent indicated they want the original budget. Among Manchester voters, eighty-seven percent indicated that they want the original budget. And behind these numbers, there are real people, real people who support our schools and have indicated they will vote. There are also real people working in our schools and their lives can be affected by your decisions, even if they're not laid off. And of course, at the heart of this are our young people, our children, our students who, of course, as you know, will be affected by your decisions. Thank you for your time and I wish you the best as you come to decision.
Thank you. And thank you for the um very clear way you have presented this incentive. So thank you. Big fan of cloud charts. Thank you. Anyone else in person for public comment? Name and address and then your two minutes will begin.
I would like to address my concern over implementing new classes instead of maintaining the current existing ones. I don't understand why.
Oh, okay, thank you. Also, well under time and also new information. So thank you. Anyone else in person like to make public comment? Please name an address and then your time will begin.
I provided comments in writing and I was also a family, so I'm not going to repeat that. I didn't mention though at the family meeting that I was hoping there were ways to consider out of the box solutions. And one thing I'd love to consider is are there other funding sources that we could have? One of them is to be increasing the number of school choice students, however I've been calling them correctly, but that would also have the added benefit of increasing the number of students here, which would infer the justification for continuing to offer the wide selection and wide with the classes we offer, which I think regularly are critical in helping our kids be well-rounded and giving them the skills and knowledge they need so that they can succeed when they venture beyond the halls of the school.
Thank you very much. And I believe that'll be addressed in the conversation. Anyone else in person making a public comment?
I like need a little more time.
I, I am sticking.
Two minutes.
We don't work like that. Please, please, please don't put me on the spot like this. But he is keeping track for you.
I don't want to miss this opportunity to give the alternative view, why I voted no.
Say your name and address and then we'll, we'll start your time over.
At the table. It's that important. So Shelley Bradbury at seventy-nine Eastern Avenue. I don't want to lose this opportunity to speak on the vote of why I voted no and also why the override was a no. And why you're not hearing an alternative view right now. At the last public hearing, there were four times, four or five times, there was a call for the alternative view. No one gave it because it's an impossible ask. That room was so full of so much support for this goal, which we all have. When you, when you speak and you say no to this override, there's this false narrative that you don't believe in education or you don't support it. And that's just not true. But at the public hearing, people are so intimidated. There's so much pressure. They what they're doing is they're going to get up and they're going to be speaking to their family members, to their neighbors, to their friends. They know the kids, their kids know their kids. It's impossible. That's why you didn't hear anything. This holds true at the annual town or town meetings. There's a lot of pressure there. All the parents come, they come to vote for that article. There's very few brave souls that get up and speak about against this. They're not against the education, but they have real concerns. They want to be heard. They would rather a secret ballot. So they're not singled out and people won't judge them for what they're thinking. So when you, when we have the ballot, right? A voter doesn't have pressure or intimidation.
I have to tell you, we're running out of time, but please.
Would the board consider me? Thank you. At the ballot, you have the the time from seven A M. to eight P M. to vote. There's no pressure. People come, senior citizens, it works in their work schedule when they have the time. And they voted. They voted yes or no. There is not a line where there was an explanation, explanation. Why did you vote this way? This is democracy. You don't have to explain your vote. The vote is clear. It said no. And from my perspective, it's not from conversations and from meetings that I've attended. It's not that education is not supported. It's really financially the fear of the residents. And it's just now not senior citizens who are on fixed income that usually can't do this. It is going now through the sector of the population. You have families with kids in this school system that are saying no. They support it. But they're thinking, I'm going to be taxed out in a couple of years. How am I going to live here? So I don't want you to to ignore this vote because Essex voted no. Not for edge, not because they don't support education, because they have concerns. They they want, they ask questions, but there's a lot of hostility when you bring up any of it. There's personal attacks. And I just don't want you to vote on this without considering nine hundred plus people came to vote for the ballot, five hundred on this without considering 900 plus people came to vote for the ballot, 517. And I've listened to your workshops and I've heard how people have said, there's so much support. We've heard so much support for the original budget. But this was the official vote that needs to be heard. It is so unwise. I can't tell you if you decide to bring back the budget. It is for voters. Again, not heard. They are listening, they are paying attention, but they cannot speak about it. I jumped out of an airplane last year at 14,000. I would rather be in that airplane than stand here. That's how much pressure this is. So I want to leave you with something positive. Because I've listened to your conversations and Einstein said, he said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." And I've heard your workshops and you're still going around in a circle and you have to break out of this with profound thinking to allow these possibilities to come outside of this box. I have heard superintendent going in several times say, "We want our graduates to be empathetic global citizen," which is so beautiful and amazing. But if we don't take this opportunity for these possibilities to teach the students right now how we can come together as towns, how we can be heard, how we can work together, then they're never going to learn it somewhere else except here. So please consider people support this education. But it is what we can afford and they are worried and they just want to be heard.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to recognize, I understand, I see people throwing their arms up about the time. I get it.
I rushed through my.
I know you did. Yes, I understand. I understand.
600 people.
I know. I know.
That was one person.
This is the worst part of public comment is that we do have to have some structure. We had some board saying, let's hear it out. I get it. But I understand. We, is there anyone else who is planning to make public comment tonight in person? Okay. Okay, so that being the case, before we hand it over to Pam, I think I'd like to just give our findings here. I wouldn't call them findings, but it speaks a little bit to what Shelley was saying as well. This is based on what I have received, just so that everybody knows where we're at, the committee as well as the general public. This is as of 3:38 PM today. I have received on this subject, a total of 286 emails. Again, this is what I received. I did not, you know, see if other people had individual ones, but, but the chairs he seat on most communications. So I have 286 emails of those 119 were from, excuse me, more than that. I'm going to give you the Manchester ones first. From Manchester by the Sea, I had 110 hard yes. The, as in hard yes for the, in support of the original budget, the 321 budget. Fifty-three of those came in the format of a form letter that was circulated. And 52 of those came before the compromise budget was presented. The, after the compromise budget was presented, we had 13 more come in in support of the original budget. We have nine emails from Manchester by the Sea residents that are in favor of a compromise or are asking questions about a compromise solution. So unsure. From Essex, I have a total of 92 emails. Seventy-nine of them are yes on the original. Sixty-two were in the format of the form letter that went out and all of those came in before the public hearing where the compromise budget was presented. An additional 17 came in after. I did receive 12 hard no. These were not compromise budgets. These were emails that said, "We do not support this. Please respect the vote." Ten of those were from people who do not have kids in the district and two were from people who do have kids in the district. There was one email from an Essex resident that was unclear about whether there was support for any given budget. But wanted to reaffirm frustration and a push toward a collaborative effort for moving forward. So to, to your point and to the point, we have received a lot of input. We did this in a variety of ways. We did hold a public hearing and for, and I understand that it is easier for some than for others to be able to stand and say that, especially in a format like that. We have now also received a considerable amount of support from the group that has put this together. That is an enormous amount of numbers. And it is overwhelmingly in favor of the original budget or some form of a compromise. However, our job is to take all that in and to consider that we have a fundamental issue here that we have two towns that want to support education and the program and care deeply about it. And we don't have two towns that have passed the full amount right now. So that's where we are. We have to reconcile that together. And so with that, Pam, if you would like to do the overview and then we can start the deliberation.
Can you give me a little guidance on how much you want? I mean, we have been talking about this now for a month. It's quarter of nine and you haven't started your deliberation. So I can go through them all. I can just recap that we have three options on the table.
Let's do that.
The original March 21st adopted budget.
Yeah.
Brief history, we adopted a full budget on 2/7. In March, we had two big variables in the budget that finally settled and became actual numbers for us. The contract in healthcare, so we revised the budget on March 21st and that's the budget that went to town meeting was approved fully in Manchester.
Was that revised budget? How much was it brought down? I just forget the final number is around 524, I think.
Yeah.
Pam, before we get too far into it, this is stuff we don't have in front of us, right?
Right.
We cannot, we cannot see or read that.
This is. I mean, this is basically the same.
This is the same.
It's the same document that we've been using all week with a slight variation that we took out. We made some of the adjustments that we discussed yesterday afternoon.
This is from the slideshow that you circled earlier to the community?
Yeah, it's also. I wasn't intending to go through the, all of the variations. This basically shows you the three, the three budgets in the financial. I have all of the texts that show that talk about the difference between the budget. So in, and 2/7, we passed the original FY25 adopted budget. We got good news in March, brought the spending down by 485, 486,000 dollars. And this was the budget that was, this is the budget that was presented to both town meetings, passed in Manchester, passed in Marquette Essex with 290,000, 281,000 dollars put into an override ask. That's.
289.
289. That's the piece that did not meet the success. And that is what is put back here today, which has two potential options plus the original budget as what could be resubmitted to the two towns. And so the, what the 516 is the cuts budget, right? So with that attempted to do, and I know there's a lot of different opinions on how drastic it, it's not, it really isn't a drastic cut budget. It really was a surgical reduction of courses that had less than 10 students in them, of sections of courses that had less than 10 students in them. Trying to be responsive to some of the concerns that we were carrying to many small classes after going through a significant enrollment reduction. These are, some of these cuts had been identified as early as November by the principal in terms of looking at multi-year trends of enrollment in coursework. So the attempt to do there was to, to take small pieces of things that were not fully enrolled, not close out courses, so to speak, but not offer sections this year and see if we can gain enrollment from it. So I think when, the only thing I'd like to leave you with is that feels very drastic to us because it's not a place that we've lived before and it's not anything that anyone would endorse or suggest that we do. We feel very strongly that we should be offering a broad program and small enrollment should not be a key driver. But when you're making multiple year adjustments for enrollment and we spent most of our time making them at the elementary level, at some point you had to follow the bubble and the bubble has not, the bubble reduction hadn't been addressed at the high school. So this was the first attempt to do this in a significant way. The word of caution is, as we go forward, these, it won't be some sections of some courses will be looking at whole position reduction per content area in the next round of cuts in terms of FY25 or 26. So then you're going to see the expansion of class size throughout all grade levels, throughout all coursework. So this is kind of our first toe into what it's going to be like if we have to do this for successive years. And I know the reaction that it's gotten to this point and how people feel about it and how people feel it's going to impact the quality of the program. So what we tried to do with the compromise budget was put in a combination of cuts and use of reserves. So our entire budget process from 20, from the beginning of November through February was premised on the fact that we should not be using reserves as revenue in the budget. Pulling them out created an even more lopsided portion in Essex that they are struggling to deal with. No one disagrees that there's a real financial problem here. What we do in the compromise budget is reverse position on that and say, we pulled out too much too fast. If we put in at least 50% of those reserves, that will kind, that will help us get to where we want to go for next year without having to take out the elective program section reductions at the high school. So basically it doesn't push us forward programmatically. It holds on to high school electives, middle, including French, no impact to middle school health as long as we can find a substitute teacher for the year. Kind of keeps the middle high school whole. It still reduces an elementary class level teacher. We can do that and still keep class sizes at about 18 to 22, the elementary level. It does not move forward with the forming arts coordinator. That's a loss, but we're not making a step forward. We're not undoing any of the music programming. It will look exactly as it does this year. And there was one other one in there we're not happy to bring up.
Specials, reading specialists.
Yeah, well reinstated the reading specialist as part of our discussion yesterday.
Yeah.
So that's back in. So let me just bring up.
You can't see it. But if you're looking on your computer, you'll see there's a grayed out area. So in the original budget that we passed in February, the original budget was set in September. We started off with four teacher reductions in that budget. Those are all based on enrollment, things we felt we could take out to lower the total ask without doing any, without having any real significant impact on enrollment. These are the cuts left in the compromise budget as of this morning. So you have the music, which is in higher with the attrition, science, teacher retirement at the high school, the elementary classroom, health wellness will be in the long-term, so we'll get some small savings from that for next year. And the paraprofessional reductions are changes in student lead or re-construction of program. Those are positions that, these are sound cuts. And we picked up the reading specials after our discussions yesterday. So I think they're compassionate. One of the things that concerning me about the compromise budget is the concept that there is no, there's no cuts in it. There are cuts of positions where we're being, we're very lucky that people are either retiring, resigning, moving on for a lot of them for good reasons. So it doesn't feel like we're losing anybody, but we're losing full position. We're shedding things and we have been shedding things for years. Our total FDP reduction between 19 and 24 is close to 16 additions district wise. 15.85 positions district wide since 19. Then 16, 15, 15.85.
Pam, can I ask, were most of those through attrition?
Yes, yes. So they were quiet cuts. Somebody, in one of the emails, somebody called them quiet cuts and they have been quiet cuts. But I see old former board members, board members who have been on, Carmen, or sort of been on, you know those cuts. We talk about them every year. They've been embedded in the budget and they're really the way we've gotten most of the money to close gaps over the years.
Pam?
Yeah.
Is there any way you can share this with us? I mean, I can't tell if that 16 is including this year's, right?
No.
We, we need to, we need to be able to see the set of information that we're working with and that you're providing here. And even if I log on, I can only see what you're sharing. I can't reference other things.
If you go to the website on the district page under budget, it's right there.
This whole, this whole slide deck is?
Pam, I'm looking at this slide.
Or is that the, that went up last night?
This doesn't correspond.
I can email it to you.
I, um.
While everyone's getting, if they need the technology for that. So what I would like to do also, since Pam has clarified what that means at this point, I know that last, at the public hearing, the Manchester, I just want to.
Let me just clarify for this. The only thing that has changed in the deck we've been using all week is a reformatting of the cut list to exclude reading specialists. It's what we had.
It includes that fourth column that reconsidered the compromise budget column?
It had a different one before, but changed between the different one before and the one tonight is what Pancho said.
They just changed the, the totals to reflect including.
At the last school committee meeting, there was a request by the school committee to adjust that fourth column by essentially $36,000. So.
So the numbers in that column are different than what we had in the.
By the amount that you asked at the last meeting, $36,000. Yep. So we're showing you what you asked, well, not you, what the committee asked, and that's the difference. It's, it's almost the same, but it's $36,000 difference.
And if that $36,000 would like.
The problem, just to be clear, that that meeting happened, I believe, yesterday.
It did, yeah.
And so.
Sorry, and that was my request.
Yeah, no, and it's fine. I mean, full disclosure, we're looking at this at 3:45 to make sure we had something up to date to reflect the changes.
Yeah, in a normal situation, we have a meeting on a Tuesday, the packet goes out on Friday, but when the meeting's yesterday, we have requested updated for today. That's what we've been doing between yesterday and today.
Yeah. Um, can I just take one second? So before we start our deliberation, which we need to do now, I want to acknowledge that we do have input from our town partners. And so I know last week, our Sarah Melish, the finance committee chair spoke at the, at the hearing in favor of a compromise of sorts as well. And I know, I believe that we have input tonight from Essex boards. So now would be the time, if you'd like to say that before we start deliberating.
Both the Essex Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen voted to support the compromise budget that was accepted on 5.3. And further, we feel that any use of this reserve plays a greater impact on addressing any modifications that seek to resolve the long-term enforcement.
Thank you, Chairman Prehn. So for the purpose of.
I didn't get the second.
I didn't get the second part.
Would you like to repeat the second part? They don't want us to go beyond the use of reserves in that.
So can I just comment to them? First, we feel that any use of this reserve plays a greater impact on addressing any modifications that seek to resolve the long-term enforcement challenge.
In layman's terms, is it?
We understand that the compromise presented on 5.3 means 252,000 dollars of reserve. We, yesterday at the workshop, Karen or workshop.
Workshop.
Jokingly, I'm sure Superintendent Bowden said, "I would never recommend this, but we have to go all in and for 781,000 dollars of reserve assets probably in this funnest thing." We're saying that is a horrible idea. We don't want to see ourselves at 1.5 million next year in this picking, you can't ever see. So while we appreciate that you're extending, you know, the olive branch, 252,000 coming out of those three years.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Prehn. I see Chairman, or Select, are you officially?
Yeah.
Chairperson Harrison, would you like to speak, please?
I'd just like to make it clear that the Board of Selectmen and the and the Finance Committee in Manchester, back before our meeting, we had no idea what a compromise would be. And the the position that the group took was that neither the budget that had been turned down as an override nor the what we were calling hard cuts budget was acceptable.
Fair. Thank you very much.
Can I just, I really want to just finish one point.
Yep.
Because. Because I, I understand you, it's bigger now than what we did yesterday. So just to reflect. Sixteen positions since nineteen.
Including, including what we're proposing this year.
Of the FY twenty four compromise budget. So that's seven just in this budget this year.
For the compromise budget, not the hard pass budget.
Yeah, this is what you've spent most of your time over the past year's time. So if we want to go to another one, we can. To the point being made about reserves with the re. With the withdrawal of the reading specialist, you're now up to two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in reserves. Okay, all of the other traditional pieces stay in place, but we reduced that teacher FTE reduction to two ninety eight. And for those of you who are following the original budget, one of the big gains we made by moving off of um. Existing teacher reductions, so layoffs, that we gained back about a hundred thousand dollars in anticipated unemployment costs. That's how we got to the gap and why we don't have um closer to three fifty or four hundred thousand dollars in reserves. With this into, to Ruth's point, and I was joking, yes, very much so. Um. Uh we just want to bring your attention to what we're going to be looking at next year in terms of a gap. So this is the financial layout. And then you have, we're anticipating now with the compromise budget, a potential one point four million dollar um gap next year. Um and this is just the breakdown of what it would be to get the district budget to a three point five total assessment. Plus um attention to enforcement. Um and then if we need to get to two point five, and six on top of it, and as a point of discussion, just maybe an assumption. It would be another two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So if we're starting to talk about overrides or additional revenues or thinking differently, we need thinking differently. That's going to cover one point four million dollars or the drastic cuts package this year won't seem very drastic at all.
Okay. So now we're actually going to deliberate. Okay. So um to frame, just for process wise, the way this works is we work by motion because that's how this works. Um and so what I am going to propose is that um, is that there's a motion to approve a version. Again, all things are on the table, but then that way we can get, we can get a motion in a second and we can have discussion. And then we can either accept or, or turn down that motion uh within it. And within the discussion, we have all of the options on the table. So with that, given um the, the focus that we've had the last few days to try and understand and the um input we've had just now from Chairperson Prehn. I move that we approve the compromise budget as presented here. We're, we're open to discussion now.
Okay.
You might need to model something here in the moment. Go ahead, Erica, please start.
Um when the idea of a compromise budget was first put on the table. I believe Pam, when you presented it, it was with two sort of contingencies, one being that Essex. Be willing to agree to help fund the fields and two being that we're willing to engage, that the town be willing to engage in some type of facilitated process because. In my view, without saying too much right now, the only reason to adopt a compromise budget is because it puts us on a path to avoid where we are today. There is no reason to adopt a compromise budget if we're going to be right back here next year. So we want to get on a better path where our towns can be working together and, and I take your advice that perhaps a facilitated process. Makes sense, but I dialed into the Essex um meetings yesterday, the Select Board and the ThinkCon, and it sounds to me. And I know we have a chairman here tonight, but I don't know, maybe I misheard it, but it sounded like there wasn't a willingness to agree to a facilitated process. So I just wanted to explore that because that seems inherent in us adopting this part, this path.
Would you like to speak to that? Can I just?
Yeah, I'd love to hear your thing. So I was, I was on the call last night too, but was not in a position to, to speak. I agree with your um. Your concern around the term mediation, and I've heard that from other people because it has the feeling of arbitration and someone making a decision on our behalf. When I was writing up that contingency con- concept, my, my concept, what I had envisioned in putting that forward was the, the, basically the process we've engaged in with our. Association for many years, which is interface bargaining. So it's really, it's a return to collaboration. Um it's all parties at the table or representatives of, it can be done in public, it can be done as a working session and then reported out. But what it is, is it's a facilitator who helps us establish common interests and then work through a problem solving process to come up with joint problems. Resolutions to solve the problems. So that was more what I was thinking when I penned that.
So is your, is your question about whether or not what the, what the interpretation was? So I, I'll give my interpretation, but then I, I will invite Chairman Prehn. So my interpretation from last night, I just want to be really clear, was that I noticed a marked tone shift in the conversation. Um in, from, from where the conversation has been to where it's come. Um I, I understand about the, I understand much better after last night, the concern about committing to the turf field um support. Not knowing where we're going to come out tonight. So if we're sending this back as is, then, then we're already asking for two hundred and eighty, eighty nine thousand dollar override. To then say, yes, but we fully support another four hundred thousand in the fall is a difficult thing to, to do in advance. So it's kind of like waiting until we're. Done with this to be able to know if that's the case. Um please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that should that be the case, there is support for putting it to the town meeting. Um if, if we are moving forward without an additional override ask at this point. Am I wrong on that, Chairperson Prehn?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, all right. Um so I noticed a difference from, from how the conversation has been. I, I expected to have to kind of. Ask a little bit more really specific um commitment style questions, but there was um. There did seem to be a willingness and I did notice that um the facility, changing the word from mediated to facilitated, and I see she's nodding, seemed to make a big difference. And I think that um, that the way Pam just described it is more in line with what, it's also what we're familiar with uh as a committee. As a process for moving forward. So anyway, that's, that's my answer to that. I don't know if it's helpful to you.
Do we as a committee want a direct commitment to have a facilitated process or is? The, is your um feedback on the tone? Do you feel, are you suggesting that that should be sufficient? I, I just want to understand, it was part of the original package. So I want to be clear on what we're voting on.
I think you're right. I, I'm not sure that I can, I don't know that they can, I don't know.
And I think it's important to note that a facilitated process still doesn't guarantee any result. And it still doesn't guarantee that we are anywhere other than where we are right now at this time next year. My, it's not the same. I also. I feel as though collaboration meetings, which I'm not a part of, so I can't speak to exactly what happens during them. Um but our finance subcommittee meetings, our collaboration meetings, all of these are small groups of people getting together. Um sunlight is the best disinfection, disinfectant. We hear over and over again that we aren't communicating clearly enough and that we aren't transparent enough. Um I don't see any reason to push for a facilitated process. I see a reason to push for a more open process wherein. The town boards and the town finance committees and the school committee are meeting in open meetings so that. There aren't any closed door agreements because I think that's part of how we've ended up here.
I mean, if anyone's, for what it's worth, I would recommend a facilitator, IBB, if the group decides. And an open process like we did with our negotiations this year, where you do have either all the boards sitting or to manage the numbers. Delegates of the board sitting at the table, but have it open like this so everybody can watch the process.
And we didn't end up doing IBB this year.
We didn't.
We just ended up doing open sessions. Because I think it's important to the, I, my recollection is that the amount of training that it would have required us all to participate in an IBB was.
Would be time consuming. But to the point that was raised, maybe exactly what we need to get us on a more collaborative footing. And to engage in this work together as opposed to, I mean, this is why we cho, we have chosen IBB as a district for so many years, which is. The things get, that gets said in frustration when you're trying to problem solve or when you're in a crisis are, take longer to undo. Than the time it's going to take to build. Toward an IBB process. We did forego it this year. We had enough people, I think, on the committee who had some training and had a collaborative spirit that it still ended up fairly. Collaborative in nature. Um I just offer, it's probably worth it for us to investigate it at this point. The problem's only growing larger.
I just, yeah, briefly just say as a person who participated in several IBB negotiations, I think the key thing for those who are not familiar with the, with the jargon term. It basically requires every person to step into the shoes of the other person and solve the other person's problem as if they were the other person. And I think it's pretty clear that we have. Very well defined positions, but what we don't yet have is a clear sense of how we might help to solve everybody's problem. And it, there may be not be magic there and you may not get to an answer, but I think we, it, it does provide the opportunity for everyone to work on bringing themselves to other biggest positions. That's how the process works.
And I'll offer that the district as an organization, not me, not Avi. The district as an organization is in a very difficult position because it, it needs to synthesize two extremely different inputs. You're dealing with it right now. When we build budgets, when we build program, we're always trying to manage what we hear clearly and empathize with on both sides, but we don't have a clear path. And cannot find the solution alone. We need the partners to all be at the table to synthesize and hear one another and what those concerns are. My greatest fear in this is that we section off and start meeting separately with Essex to try to solve the problem, then try to relay the, the, what's going on to Manchester, then be asked to go and try to do problem solving with Manchester. And we're just being yanked. The organization is being yanked back and forth and never focusing on its core mission.
Anna's got her hand raised. I want to speak to this too, so go ahead.
So we're not trying to decide a process, right? So what I was going to recommend is the combination of the two. Because um it might be hard to get the Board of Selectmen and the ThinkCon from both towns together, but I, I would say at a minimum, or maybe only like a quarterly. But I say at, at the minimum, doing the budget process, maybe monthly to meet with the ThinkCons analysts. Um so like there's a, the quarterly with everybody, but monthly we're like the finance, uh when we're talking about the budget. But it is a process that need to time it out. So make sure that we're all on the same patience at the beginning to the end.
Yeah. So I think I'd like to take just a second, give me a second to do this. I'm, I, I don't want to derail into how, like the details of how this have to happen. But I think it would be helpful for our committee to see, there could be a path. Here is a structured path. There, we have the ability, like I said, we don't need to do the details right now, but we have the ability right now to set the tone for this. So right now we need to, to truly solve this issue, which is going to determine basically how big the issue is next year. But no matter what, we have to get through.
Can you specify what you mean, but when you say this issue, right? Because we talk about the problem, this issue all the time.
Okay.
There are many.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing our job before us in two parts right now. I'm seeing we need to stabilize the district by passing a fiscal twenty year, twenty four budget. That is the thing we need to happen. It needs to be something that can pass both towns, however we decide that needs to take place. And we are actually on a deadline. That has to happen tonight. Beyond that though, we need to come up with a process and it might include IBB. It might include other things and, and we can at another time brainstorm that. We've got great ideas and we have very knowledgeable people who can help us with that work. That will solve the bigger issue of aligning the expectations for how, level services, which our two communities do support in theory, right? They want good education with the fiscal constraints, like we mentioned further. That's a separate process and I know it feels like one without the other, but this is the one that we're on a deadline with. And so I feel like we really need to dig into the one that has a deadline, which is what are we going to do tonight? For a fiscal twenty four budget to move forward. Are we entertaining the idea of resending this back as it's, or where are we with this?
Please, I just want to say something because I don't actually think beside, the only person that's really talked about the budget so far has been Pam. I think when we, so there, there are some basic facts here, right? The, and you and Jake both said it, uh that we're going to request an override of one of our towns. We cannot do that. That is completely overstepping our bounds and our purview. We, we cannot as a school committee. Ask or accept or have an expectation that one of our member towns is going to even propose an override, never mind. On behalf of the school. That's, that's not the way this works, right? The school district. Works collaborative with the towns to understand their needs within, you know, their budget planning, our budget plan. We try to come to a collaborative understanding. We, we did that, right? And usually when collaboration meetings occur, you know, no one ends up happy with what the decision is, right? So then from there, we presented a budget to both towns. It is then completely out of our hands. It is then the purview of each town to decide how they want to. Each town's Board of Selectmen to decide how they want to structure their town budget, how they want to. Uh you know, uh pay different areas of their town budget and there's a lot of different ways that they get revenue, right? So all of that is out of our control, out of our purview. It doesn't have anything to do with us. I, I hate to say it, right? Like Essex, uh the, the Essex Board of Selectmen could have, they're, you know, decided to. Uh. Restructure their budgets that they didn't need an override this year. That could have theoretically happened. It probably would have meant a lot of cuts in a lot of different other areas and, and again, I can't, I, this isn't even my business, right? Like I'm, I'm not even a taxpayer or voter or anything in, in Essex. So this is none of my business, but there are a lot of different ways. So when. The Board of Selectmen decided to ask for an override of their residents. And put it on the ballot. You know, that, we have no control over, you know, we, we can't campaign for that. We can't influence that. If that's what the Board of Selectmen Essex decides to do, then it's their responsibility to then. You know, work to pass that override in town and explain to their, you know, consumers. Again, nothing to do with us, right? On the flip side, because the voters in Essex voted against that override, they voted against what their Board of Selectmen decided and how they decided to fund their budget this year. I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, right? So a lot of what we keep discussing has, we have no ability to control, no purview over. Nor is it any of our business, but we're trying to like guess and figure out and listen to meetings and think, you know, to inform our decisions and what it should be and. What our decisions should be made in a couple of different ways, in my opinion, right? We, we have four main stakeholders in our school district. Our students, uh the residents of Manchester, the residents of Essex, and our teachers and administration, right, our workers. Those are the four main stakeholders in our school district. In our training, the main stakeholder here that we should be able to put first when we make decisions is the students. It's like every training that we have, like. It's like every training that we have, like, that's what we should be doing. Now, I personally think like I'm a fiscal conservative. I think that the concerns of both of our member towns should be like one A and one A. Right? It's extremely important that that is our only funding source, like our our main funding source, right? Like, what is it, ninety five or eighty five percent of our budget, right? So it's very important, but in the same way, we have no control of how that's managed. So we need to, you know, work collaboratively throughout the year. We need to think about what is best for the district, but we can't guess or control or even tell or suggest what our member boards should do about the ask that we make collaboratively.
I agree with that.
I just, I I don't get it, right? We're we're going all around. We need to focus on what our budget is and decide on what the best budget is, right?
I agree, but I want to push back a tiny bit because the fact is we need a budget that will pass. And so I feel like
Control over that.
Well, but what we do have control over is whether or not we wish to entertain the idea of taking control back into our own hands by using a structured reduction of reserves as an operating, so a a a source of operating funds in this compromise budget, then we're we're taking control back from us. And I think we we should be careful with the language. You're right. It's not, it's not, you know, if we decide to to fully support the original three twenty one budget because that's I know you're not, but I'm using it as an example. If we did choose to do that and we send that back to the towns, you're right, it's not our choice. We have no say in whether the town of Essex chooses to ask for an override to fund that or structure it a different way or choose to use free cash. But I know those questions have been asked recently. And the answers that I've, the answers that we've been getting are we're not inclined to use free cash to fund the excess portion of it. So if that's not the case, we just have to be, we do have to consider that taxpayers are going to have to vote on that because in my mind, part of the the critical element here is that we're dragging this out into the summer if we don't regain control of this process right now. And that to me is is a bigger concern.
So you want to gain control of what process?
Not even the process. I want to take this out of waiting on another town and take it back here. I'm in, I will, I'll be the first one to say I support the compromise budget. I support this option, even though I have railed over and over about getting reserves out of play. I don't like the idea of taking a backtrack on that. And I have new information. Our voters did vote it down and I do believe firmly based on the questions that we've asked that if we put this back, that the excess is going to be in the form of another override vote. And I do not believe Essex has the votes to accomplish it. I truly don't. I don't want to drag this out another month and a half to get to it. But that's, that's just me and I can, I can own that opinion. Go ahead, Erica.
Yeah, I I guess I'm going to echo some of that because the one thing that we definitely have control over is whether or not we want to give certainty to this process here and now. And I haven't decided where I come out on the bigger picture, but one thing I know is the longer we wait and the more uncertainty we have, the worse position we put our educators in. The harder it becomes to attract and retain the educators we have. What they need to know is that there's a budget in place because while we do not control, and you're absolutely right, how the towns choose to fund the district, we do know that there's a likelihood, or at least a possibility, even if you want to say a possibility, that this ends up back in a vote and, you know, potentially a joint town meeting. And all of this drags on and Chris, yeah, while a deadline is about to pass, other deadlines will pass too. And then we're in an even worse position with teachers who say, you know what, maybe there's a more stable district somewhere else. So I want to respect the fact that the best part of our school district is our educators. And we want them to feel stable and secure as we try and figure out a path to a better future.
On that note, the June fifteenth deadline that is coming to to notify educators about their about potential loss of position, this does make a difference there. If we're moving with a a process here that is going to be waiting for answers elsewhere, that's a level of uncertainty. You're going to have to make these notifications anyway because we won't have the affirmative approval. But if we're saying we are going to use a structured reduction in reserves and we're not waiting on anybody else to do that, there's a level of certainty there that I feel is worth the I I feel that it's worth the risk given the tone shift and that we can't get a contract in writing for those two things. I think it's worth taking that gamble. But I I see your point because you're absolutely right. It's not our call how that gets paid in the end unless we take this back in-house.
So I also don't understand you're gonna have to help me understand how a compromised budget which is not going to from what we've heard, not going to be a budget that is under the current levy limit of Essex, the way that their town budget is structured. So it's still going to require an override. So it's
That that seven eighty four number, if we hit it, that should take them just under. And allow them to just use the increased levy limit which they voted in Article four.
I think you're talking about Essex's capacity.
Right, yeah, okay.
And that's the, that's already done, yeah.
Okay.
All of the, both of the reconsidered options, May sixteenth reconsidered and five twenty three compromise agreed, you need better timing, but those two budgets both aim at addressing the seven hundred and what's seven eighty four, seven eighty one, seven hundred and eighty one thousand dollars gap to make sure that we come in on the on the dot. And don't need any type of override or additional revenue reserves from the town.
Right, okay.
And what, and while we, and while you're right, we don't make the decision about how that gets financed or presented to the towns. We have been pulled multiple times by Ben Buttrek that anything above one dollar above what was approved at town meeting is going to trigger an override. So we know, even though that's not our decision, we know the implication of that decision.
Where's this side of the table at? How you doing?
So I
This is the hard stuff. We have to put our names on the thing right now.
Can I ask? And I I have talked to quite a lot of people, you know, people that supports over it, people that against over it, people that support the full budget and people that support that in a compromise budget. But I, I think there are some people that supports the full budget. They were under impressions that the compromise budget have cut. But if you were, if you know the compromise budget doesn't have any staff layoffs, would you be still support the compromise budget?
So cuts and layoffs are not the same thing.
The compromise budget is eliminated positions, not staff. So knowing that, would people that fully support the full budget, would 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 people still support the compromise budget?
Our, I don't, we can't, we can't, yeah, we're not, we're not in that.
Then we have
Before we involve getting input from else, we need to put our names on these. We need to see where we stand. This is our job to do. We've had hundreds of emails, four and a half hours of public hearing, countless hours of deliberation. Like, we have to do this right now first.
But some of the emails, I think, well, we already know yesterday that because people confused about what was in a compromise budget, that's why they supported the total whole budget. That's my own.
There may be three emails of that. I I we have to do this work right now. This is our job. We do.
And I implore you not to call and I I understand the language is tough and it can be a matter of semantics, but the document in front of you, these are cuts. Whether there's somebody being laid off because of it, these are cuts. This is a reduction to our ability to offer the program. Some are sound, some are quiet because we can manage enrollment. But if I'm looking at a one point four to one point five million dollar gap next year and we decide, you know, we need a new teacher at the elementary school because we had ten kids move into the third grade, we can't have it. You know, and yes, sometimes that is the life of hard knocks and that's where the district is stuck, right? Because if it's about the bottom line, yeah, there are ten kids in the class and we're, that's the new normal and we have to live with it. We can run the school. But it's does not measure up to what the expectation of at least, you know, sixty percent of our population is based on the inputs that we have. So we're, the district is going to be in a conflict between meeting expectations and having to make decisions on the bottom line to meet obligations. That's our job. We can do it. We're seeing the past few weeks, that this is what will continue to happen as we have to make those difficult decisions. We're well equipped to make them. But this will be this, this.
I have a question for the committee. What is, what are your reservations about this right now? This is the, this is the thing we're talking about right now. Is that a hand or about this specific proposal? Yeah, so Jake then Erica and then Kate.
Let me say what I was gonna say and then I can speak back. So for me, and and Erica, maybe the reason you started with a question about process is because this is not actually right now about the specific numbers and specific cuts. This is actually right now a conversation about strategy. And what sets us up for next year. And we have a kind of a key decision here and and Chris, I think you I may not have heard it appropriately when you first said it, but the the decision is, do we use reserves to avoid a prolonged kind of town approval process, right, with all the consequences that come with that? Or do we try to put forth a budget that is either at the March level or some reduced version to show that we heard from voters? But that's, we know will trigger an override and a potentially a prolonged process. Almost no matter what that takes into the summer or or either town meetings and or ballot votes. My perspective on this, first of all, I think we need to do a compromise, whichever of those two we do. Trying to put back the original budget as it was back in March or as we as we put to towns previously will only harden positions, particularly for those who are are financially struggling and voted no, right? That that basically shows that we're ignoring that whole perspective. So I would not go there. I would go for a compromise. To me, the question I've been wrestling with for the past month now is whether or not there is the capacity to get an override passed in Essex, even a reduced one.
Right.
Or do we better set ourselves up for next year by taking the more financially risky road as Pam has articulated and using our revert operation. Given every conversation that I've been involved in and input that I've gotten, I am very weary about the potential of the success of an override in the summer and getting participation for that. So my take on this would be, let's do what we need to do to avoid that lengthy town-based process and use the reserves to get us in a position where we can start next year on a solid footing with the communities. It does leave the question, Erica's initial que- point, how do we best incentivize all the towns and us to collaborate? On that, we can't dictate that to anybody else. We can only take steps to suggest that we're open to it and we are going to change our processes in order to enable that. And then it's up to them to decide if they want to join, but we can't dictate it. We can't put contingencies on the budget that try to force that.
I think we see what happens when we, when we do. It's not, we don't get there. Yeah. I think, Erica, was it Erica then Kate?
I'm gonna answer your question, Chris. I see.
Can I ask a question? Can we, for this, we had a really productive last couple sessions. I would move that we forego Robert's rules for this conversation so that we can actually respond to one another in real time at this point. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Out of favor. Okay. Go ahead, so that you can respond to each other.
This actually isn't a response to Jake, it's a response to you. So you asked, you know, what our thoughts were, what our issues were with the compromise budget. And I do want to I I want to acknowledge one significant to me is that ninety percent of Manchester voted for the original budget. And, you know, I I heard the concerns of the Essex resident that that stood up and talked about the fact that, you know, democracy, the ballot box said one thing in Essex, but democracy and the ballot box in Manchester said something different. So we're in a really complicated position and I want to hear our residents too in saying that we want a fully funded school system at the level of the original budget, which which I still believe I voted for it at the time and I still believe it was the right budget. The only thing giving me pause is that process-wise, I don't think we get it through and I think we're in a worse position next year. So that's that was, that was
And it's a hindrance. And and that's what leads us to the idea that there's there's enough public awareness. Look at all these people still here. I mean, there's enough eyes on this right now to actually move this work forward, but there is, you're right, we have two differing opinions here. Go ahead, just go ahead.
I do think it's important, you know, it's definitely it's definitely like the the person that stood up to talk about the 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 no vote at Essex and and their perspective.
Yeah.
Because, and that's why the reason why I was asking, I was trying to get an answer because I do feel like if we don't, if if we were to especially the six hundred people, you know, out of like six hundred eighty seven percent is, you know, trying to have full budget voted through. I do feel like in some way I would like to know more and acknowledge that, yes, we heard you, but how would you feel about this other scenario? Because otherwise we are treating, you know, the people the same way, that we are not listening to that side that have been trying so hard for the past few weeks or months, trying to, you know, make sure that, you know, this is getting through and it's going to be difficult for them to see that, you know, trying so hard over the past few weeks and now we're talking about something completely different. And I I do think that we need to acknowledge that.
So Anna, I would, I would just say that's our, depending on what we decide, that's our job to communicate that. We can't take the time now to ask the public that question. So it's our job, based on our decision, to communicate the rationale for it and the consequences of it so that we can set ourselves up for whatever town meetings need to happen, which vary based on scenario and getting into the process next year.
So what happens if we went ahead with the compromise budget as it was presented, we draw the, what is it, two hundred and something out of reserves? Two fifty two out of reserves. Two eighty seven out of reserves. And then we get to Essex Town Meeting in the fall and the fields get voted down. And we've already done the field project. Now we are drawing one point two million dollars out of our reserves on top of the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we just drew out of reserves. That is my hesitation.
Just a quick mad item here. So last year we had, this year's budget, five hundred and twenty thousand reserve revenue committed. And the current compromise there is two hundred and eighty seven thousand. Clearly, that's a step in the right direction financially, putting no value judgments on how that impacts our school and community. If you take that budget, I just want everyone to make sure you understand, your gap next year is going to be higher. So if you have a concern that you can't pass an override of X size, you're going to be talking about an override of an even bigger size next year if you are not cutting positions this year. Or you're using revenue from reserves. So the threat is not the two hundred and eighty seven thousand. You guys have seen our reserve positions. This isn't about hoarding that cash and not wanting, making taxpayers pay, you know? It's about what is the ask to taxpayers if you eventually correct this problem through additional revenue through an override? And the answer is, with the more you do a half measure this year, the more the hill next year is going to be much, much bigger. And the portion of it is going to be on the school committee if the three and a half is the commitment. So I just
But the apportionment for Essex is gonna increase again next year. So not only is the number, the correction of the override going to increase, but also the apportionment of that is going to increase unfavorably towards one of our member towns. It makes no sense.
I can, I just want to say one last thing because I am one hundred percent not saying that the compromise I, can I just wanna say one last thing? Cause I am one hundred percent not saying that the compromise budget is bad. I'm not saying, that's your job, not mine. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it or anything. It's not my job. All I'm saying is that, in addition to the benefits that I'm hearing people talk about, there is a detriment which happens, which is that the number next year grows. So I just don't want people to be surprised when we get to next year's conversation and say. Oh my God, this number is, this correction is so much bigger. The two ways to get to that are to provide additional revenue or to cut the, the spending. Those are the two ways to solve it. It's all I wanted to say.
So do we pull the Band-Aid now and take all the cuts? If, if we're not, or do we say that, I mean, really, if, if that's what we're talking about, then we're either pulling the Band-Aid off now and taking that's. Or we're entertaining the idea of sending it back as is, recognizing that there's a very strong likelihood that it will fail again. And ending up at a two-town town meeting. That, I know there are people who are quite thrilled about that idea, because it would get us to this, this level budget that we know we support. We know was the right budget. We all worked through the whole budget process. Not you, but you're good. And, and I'm here. But we have to remember that there is a very real, you've heard Diego talk about the climate in the schools right now. I'm hearing about it from students as well, that us doing that is going to have a major impact. On the climate of the schools and the climate of the two communities. If that's a risk we're willing to take, we need to know that we're owning that down the line.
Just offered. Certainly don't have a list and we don't know how we would approach it. And I feel like I need to say. Whatever your job is in the district, whether you're an administrator, a dean, a teacher or a custodian, you're all valuable. So picking one group over another for cuts is not a way to run this. And I'm a little disappointed with how fitting people against each other.
Yeah.
But saying that, as it's, one point four million is another sixteen to seventeen teachers before calculating anything else.
And we.
I would just like to state some facts.
All, all categories.
Yeah. I would just like to state some facts because. And at this point, I, I guess, you know. So listen, th- this year um that we've been talking about this has been, through collaboration meetings, has been set up. As our override year. We've been walking towards this cliff for four years now. We've all heard the story a hundred times, right? Last year at Essex Town Meeting, the. Board of Selectmen member appointed to these collaboration meetings got up and in his support of last year's school budget. Specifically announced to the Town of Essex that an override was coming this year. There was going to be no avoidance. So this year, what happened, right? In a year where the school committee negotiated a four-year teacher contract with district leadership and the teachers' union. Limiting the COLA increases to two point five, two point two five, two point five and two point five, which is well below the cost of inflation, right? Ensuring that our biggest expense, which is people, remains manageable long-term, right? And any year that our operating budget is only increasing by two point eight five percent, that's like across the board, not with the portion, right? Which is essentially a negative increase in real dollars. Like, the budget went down in real dollars compared to what the average inflation rate is, right? In a year when, you know, two weeks before both town meetings, we received, like, we talked about lower than expected healthcare costs, among some other savings. And lowered the budget by almost half a million bucks to what we had actually approved and worked through collaboration with our town boards. And they supported at that, you know, point, allegedly, right? So with all of these things, when the Essex voters came out to vote on the ballot, which. You know, again, I, I just know most of the people I talk to, know in town, they do not have the time to even just understand some of this. These basic things. And I, and I don't expect them to, you know, it's, it's not their, it's not their job to, right? Like, this, it took me a, a year to start to really get familiar and really understand how this stuff works. Cause it's big and complex and, and I still don't understand how the town side works, right? You know, I, I heard yesterday that, you know, I heard last week that the. You know, most towns, their spending usually goes up by three and a half to four percent each year, you know? Um, on average, like, that's how much the actual, and you can look at the budget books, right? I guess I never did the percentages year over year, but that's how much towns' spending goes up every year, right? You know, like this historical data, I look at this and. I look at what an insanely amazing job the Board of Selectmen in Essex have done over the past twelve years. Of keeping the school district, their portion of the assessment significantly below that, like. And just, I think everyone knows, you know, compound interest, that's how you make money. Well, there's such a thing as compound savings too, like year over year over year of. A school district costing less than like three percent. I mean, like year over year over year over year over year. And then it was, it's just been in the past couple of years that Essex's apportionment has gone up more than that. And that's because of the apportionment formula. We can't fix that. Everything that we're discussing tonight doesn't fix any of that. Right? So what are we really talking about here? Like, that's, we need to reframe this conversation. It's, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I've done the math for our, our budget over the last, you know, over the last thirteen years, it's gone up on average three and a half percent. Ten years, three point six percent. Five years, three point three percent. Three years, three point five percent. Now, when you take into account the, the global factors going on, that's.
John, when you say our budget, do you mean the district or the town?
School budget, school budget, yeah.
Which includes line revenue correction from what override?
Yeah, that includes an override, like a revenue connection here, right? Like, that, and also like a ten percent increase in our healthcare costs one year.
Sixteen, it was up.
And. And we, and we kept that, that, those averages that low while our district was growing. While they were bubble, like, while our district was growing by like, what, like ten, fifteen? I don't know, I don't know what the.
Twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-seven percent our district grew in size at that point in time. And we still kept.
I mean, you find any organization in a corporate world that talks like that, it's pretty successful.
So, so what's the. So here's.
So the point here, right, is in a year of all this stuff in the history here. When because of apportionment, we ask the border, yeah, the Board of Selectmen needs to ask their residents for an override and it still doesn't get approved. It's not anything that the school district is doing, like, like the facts. There's some truths here that no matter which side you, you stay on, that, that have to be taken into account, right?
So I guess maybe that begs the question is.
Work in the road.
Right.
Right? We, we either have to reduce the program and find common ground between both. With both communities supporting a very reduced program. Or we need to. Reconcile the fact that Essex will require an override. It is not a matter of if Essex will require an override, right? We either need an override this year, which is the year we planned for it. We go with the compromise budget, we need an override next year that will be significantly larger.
A bigger one that's gonna cost Essex more because their portion is gonna go up again. It would be a horrible thing to do to the Essex taxpayers.
But we'll need to think again anyhow. So either way, even if we get an override, even if we send back the original budget, end up in joint town meetings, get an override this.
Right.
Okay, I'm saying the, the word right, but, but Chris, you know, I know what you're, you're saying, right? Understand that we are not asking for the override, but we also understand as a practical matter that Essex had said that they will need an override. So I'm, I'm just using short, short, um, short form when I say that. It's not a misunderstanding of the process, but.
I, I know.
If it ends up.
The language we use matters.
If it ends up back and requires an override this year, there will still need to be a correction next year. So we're not avoiding next year's correction. Why?
No, that was the whole point of doing this budget this year. We would not need a correction for two to three years is what we talked about. That's the whole reason why we passed the original.
I think we don't, just to clarify, we don't know that. The only, just, so the one thing we do know is that. Essex would still have an apportionment challenge that might exceed. And so the apportionment portion might create.
Right.
An override request in Essex to fund their overage over the midline. But if you did get an override this year, which we're not, we didn't, but if you'd had or on the three twenty-one budget that, you know, as Pam was saying, then.
Board of Selectmen didn't get an override, yeah.
Wha- whatever happened, the point is. You would have a sustainable budget, I think, with a small gap. That was the small chart that we had at the last time. Where school committee is managing, you know, normal deficits or trying to get to a three and a half percent target. And yet the towns still have to handle apportionment.
Right.
And as we know, if it's Essex's turn to have bad apportionment, we're cutting three dollars for everyone. So. So yes, so that's still there. That's the only reason we would have that gap in the future year primarily. There'd be a much smaller gap for school.
That's what I was referring to though, and I thought it was more of a certainty with how we projected apportionment to be going.
Can I, I want to add some light into this though.
That was to, just to be clear, sorry, I apologize. That's if you, the goal is to get Essex to three and a half percent. If the goal is to get the total number to three and a half percent, then you don't have, and you got an override this year, which we didn't, then you don't really have. An existential crisis. But if you. Are trying to say Essex's number needs to be three and a half, well, that's not gonna happen with the apportionment based on the formula rolling it forward. So that's where, even if you got an override this year, Essex still is gonna be above three and a half percent if we come in at three and a half. Is that, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yes, Ben is not available, right? Cause I know Ben had done some modeling in terms of what. A one-year ask versus a multi-year.
He's actually online.
Would look like. So he may be able to speak to what that looks like.
But before we do, can I, 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 I've gotta get this out because, and that you just actually leant right into what I was gonna say. The question becomes what's different next year? And there are some things that I think even aside from however Essex chooses to handle their portion of the assessment, we have before us. Come November, we're gonna have some really interesting, strong input. We are gonna know, number one, if we have funding for the turf fields from Essex. We're gonna know, because it, we will have come and gone through town meetings, so we will know where we stand. We will have.
It's not an operational cost though, why does that matter?
It matters in terms of where we are with reserves, looking forward as a, as a scaffold approach. No, let me get this out. So we're gonna have a clear understanding whether Essex has come to the table to play, that, that gamble, that, that leap of faith that we're talking about. Whether they're willing to do that. We're also gonna know whether EES gets picked up by MSBA. And that's huge. Because we've had so much conversation, Town of Manchester is having considerable conversation about reserve levels. You know, what's an appropriate level of reserves? Once we know if EES is being picked up in this round, or whether we have to put off till another year to, to apply again. We can structure out better what our reserve act, needs actually are. Are we just trying to limp along for a, for a shorter picture here? Or are we gonna be pushing this out and looking at a different position? And we can actually come up with a plan for those. And we can work with our town partners to understand a better idea of that. So we're gonna know both of those things. And on top of that, the ask that we've been moving forward with and that we're having trouble with, with Town of Essex. Has been a commitment toward a spending target, right? And that's the thing, that's if we're trying to get to three and a half for the assessment, right, before apportionment. That's something that we're used to and comfortable managing, but right now it's not working because of apportionment. If we're trying to address three and a half to Essex or two and a half to Essex or what have you. But we're asking a different question now. Now we're asking Essex, what is your budget for the next few years? What do you anticipate being able to bear within your confines? And then we're able to look at that and see whether that, how much that matches up with the funding that we would need for level services moving forward. And we have the opportunity to get that information early. So by, by November, we have a lot more input here to know where we're going to end up. And in the end, if we find that we don't get the funding and we've used all our, all our reserves on the field and all of this, cause. We still have the option next year of ending up at a two-town town meeting for the many, many, many people. Who care about keeping, preserving the scope of program here. It's not ideal, but we do still have that as an end option down the line if that's not the case. But I, I really think that Essex isn't trying at this point. Essex leaders are paying very close attention. And want to, want to understand and solve this. I'm hearing the language being used that is saying, we're not asking for two and a half percent to Essex at this point. That's not what we're saying. There might be people who are interested in understanding what that looks like, but, but people understand that that's unreasonable. Three of the finance committee members support the original budget in its, in its full form, supported that wholeheartedly before the compromise budget was proposed. So I, I guess my point is just, we still have to get to an outcome here. So I'm advocating right now. I'm advocating for this compromise budget because I believe it gives us a reduced structured. Uh, a structured reduction of the reserve use that gives us the time to get this additional input and put in. It gives us the time and the bandwidth with all of the public input right now to make this moving forward, to get us in alignment. But if that's not the case, someone needs to say, I want to put this back as original. Or someone needs to say, I want to take a cuts package. We have to put our names on this right now. It's getting late.
Um, I would just say that either scenario, the, the three scenarios, whichever that we choose. We are going to go into the override next year. And I do think that right now what we're looking at.
We can't go into an override now. The, the language we use matters.
Okay, so let me just put it.
The Town of Essex would need to.
Right. So let me put it this way. Right now what we're looking at is to manage the relationship, manage the expectations. The way I look at it is like, is a marriage. Like, we are in the regional agreement whether we're likely or not. It cannot be just Essex or Manchester. This is a joint issue. Essex has an issue, so Manchester has the issue too. We gotta figure it out together. So you either divorce or you counsel. You're trying to figure out together. So right now we do need to figure out together, otherwise next year we're gonna be back here again.
That's what we're doing. We have to do it right now. Someone tell me where you stand. Somebody on this committee, tell me where you stand.
So I personally, I supported the original budget, right? Uh, we can all agree that nobody wants to cut programs or teachers. Um, going into this, I was thinking, okay, we proceed with the compromise budget, however, we remove the reserves. From that, from that um budget. So I sort of meet in the middle with the Town of Essex and kick it back to the voters. However, I'm not, you know, I'm not confident that would pass, right? So in the essence of, of time and, and to move things along, like, I'm okay with, with this compromise budget as it's posed to us. I think that's, you know, my gut tells me that I, I want, I want to perceive of something that's gonna be passed by the voters. And, and it's an act of good faith with these voters. I know how a lot of the parents feel.
I know.
I've read all the emails. I've heard it all, right? I've, I've read through everything. But I don't know how the voters feel.
Yeah.
And we have a responsibility to the students, to the parents, to teachers, but we also have a responsibility to, to all the voters.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that temperature's like, because I haven't, you know, it's hard for all of us to gauge that.
Right.
I can tell you, like, ninety-one percent of the voters in Manchester passed the original budget. And then.
Agreed.
I forgot exactly what the numbers were. I think it was maybe like close to sixty percent of the voters at Manchester, sorry, Essex Town Meeting.
Yep.
Approved the school budget and approved an override to, I, I, you know, fund the budget, right? So we do know that. And then we do know that at the ballot. There was about, there was about nine, there was about nine hundred people that came out to vote. Similar vote for, like, the last time. There was a vote in Essex about going over their levy limit. Was for building Memorial. And at that vote, there was like sixteen hundred people that came out and voted, and this one was only nine hundred. And of those nine hundred voters that came out, if only sixty people had voted differently on that ballot, had changed, had not voted the way they did. If only sixty people did, then the override, the, that question would have passed on the Essex ballot. So we do have all those numbers.
Now there's a lot more information and this has been, you know, elevated, this issue, this, these discussions. I feel like, you know, that it would pass, but I'd, I'd rather play it safe.
Jake's been waiting very patiently.
Well, thank you, John, for taking a stand and putting your idea on the table. I will try to continue that. Maybe we can go around the table. So I think I've already articulated uh where I, where I stand, but just to be clear, I completely agree with John. The. The challenge to me is how do we set ourselves up for a productive year next year, working across the towns and school committee? So to do that, I do think we need to do the compromise budget. I do not, as much as there has been support.
I do not, as much as there has been support articulated for, in Essex, for either the original budget or, you know, some form of an override, I am not confident that we can get that vote actually out in the summer. And so I would go, as risky as it is, I would go for the reserve use so that we don't have to drag this out further and we can start looking ahead. I completely hear everybody's advocacy, particularly for, for parents, from parents, for, you know, not reducing from our March budget. We have done a, a great job of figuring out how to do that without impacting opportunities for students next year. And I think that's a, a significant win. What that looks like next year, we're going to have to figure out, right? What are the implications for that? But we have to get past this year in order to look longer term and start, and start that planning. So I would go for the compromise budget using reserves.
Thank you for that. I do want to put one, just put one more plug out about the summer vote. I just want to be clear that if we're talking about, we have the town meetings, the, the way the timing works for a special election, there's a longer lead time. I want to say it's 35 days. I'm looking at our town, town clerk, 35 days, which means we're into July for the special election for an override vote. Real estate bills come out July 1st. Is that correct? Real, okay. Real estate bills come out July 1st. Essex will have used excess levy capacity, our mill rate is indeed going up. Essex voters, it is going to be a harder climb in July than it was in March, in May. I, I truly believe that. I don't love it, but I think it's the reality right now. But I don't love it.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to come out and say that I'm completely against this compromise budget for so many different reasons. So, one, I think it's bad for the Essex taxpayers. I think it, we've been, you know, we've talked about the history here of what's happened over the past four years since the portion formula tipped towards one of our member towns versus the other. Which, which, by the way, when it was tipped towards, like, you talk about, like, needing corrections or hitting levy limits. So when Manchester did, when the Town of Manchester put an override on the ballot in FY16, their apportionment was still higher for one, two, three, like, the next three years before it started to tip towards away from Manchester and towards Essex. And we didn't need another correction or override that year. So again, I don't know how town governments work. I don't know how Manchester did that, but, I don't know. So, you know, I'm not convinced that the very next year, we would need another override. Again, because the numbers are going to be so small that it doesn't make common, I don't know. It doesn't, the numbers don't show that, right? And I'm just looking at the historical stuff here. And then, using reserves, we've been already doing that for three years. And for that entire three-year period, I think everyone's been working towards a correction. Or at least I thought everyone was. It's my, I'm not sure, we repeat this over and over again. So I'm not sure, do other members of the community, like, not believe it? Or you just think you can do better? Or, but I'm not sure, because we've, we've already done really well every year. We've compromised, in my opinion, much more towards the, our towns, the towns' favor versus the district's favor. Like, we've been using our own, and so, and I may not have all the information perhaps, because again, I don't know about town governments, right? But it just, common sense, I, I look at this stuff and common sense tells me that this compromise budget does nothing for the students. It hurts them, does nothing for, you know, any type of tiny flexibility we have as a school district. Doesn't actually, you know, in an extremely short-term period, what it does is for one year, Essex taxpayers will have a lower tax bill, I think. You know, again, I don't know, that's up to the Essex Board of Selectmen, right? Not, not me. But, and we're doing all of that in hopes that in, I mean, listen, these votes, we have 10 months, nine months, really? And we don't really do this over the summer, so really it's like six months. And in six months, we're going to somehow change what's been, I don't know, so apparent from everything that I look at, I just don't see how we're living in reality if we try to convince ourselves of that.
Can I ask you a question? Is there a reason why we can't revisit the agreement between the two towns?
We absolutely can, and we should, like, this issue needs to be fixed. I'm saying, trying to compromise on a budget that we already compromised once and re-compromise again, like, that should be completely independent of fixing the challenges we have. We need to work on this stuff. It is imperative that we work on this stuff. It has to be done. I just don't see how, we, I, I feel like we've been so responsible for the last four years. I don't see how, what damage are we doing by just saying, you know, now everyone sees the whole picture of what cuts could look like? I mean, you know, why can't we trust the voters to be paying more attention? And maybe they'll look at some of this information and maybe, you know, again, the data, this is just one set of data, right? I was going to ask this tonight, you know, what, what does this data tell you? Because this data can tell probably 20 different stories, right? I'm only telling one story from this data. I'm sure there's 20 other ones, right? It's true with any, any dataset that we get. So, you know, the truth is somewhere in between. I'm just, you know, I, it makes no sense to me, like, and at this point, I think, after hearing everything and all the different facts and looking at all the history that I've learned over the past month, the only two things I could support would be, like, the original budget or a full cut. And the full cut would simply at least, the only benefit to that is being able to move forward quickly, right? But again, a full cut is still not good for Essex taxpayers, right? Again, making cuts, making cuts this year is only good for one year. The budget is still going to go up three and a half percent next year. You know, budget cuts only save money in one year. It doesn't save money moving forward, it's not the way it works. So I just, we keep spinning around and around. And the only reason I think we're doing that, for the most part, is because we have so many new members that just don't know the history. The stuff is so complicated. It's so, it's a huge challenge to get up to speed and, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to, like, tell me if I'm wrong here.
I don't think you're wrong, but I want to answer.
Please give us some credit, okay? Don't assume just because we're new, we don't understand.
And I'm not new. I'm not new. So I want to, I want to address a couple of things, though. You asked a specific question, like, could we revisit the, the agreement? Like, how this has worked out? There are lots of options, and that one has been brought up a number of times. And yes, those are all on the table. We'll have to work through what the best ones are after we get through this. Tonight is about how are we going to stabilize this budget? What is the best path forward that, for tonight, for the fiscal '24? So that we can get to even that point? Do we want to spend the next two months working on this or working on that? That's, to me, the draw here. That's, that's the draw to me. But I fully understand your.
I want to have a conversation too. I don't want to just sit here and talk. I want to have a conversation about this, because.
So what are you in support of?
Hang on, first, can we continue around the table so we can hear people's positions? Because at some point, we have to call this.
So I, so I think that a full cuts path of the three, a full cuts package is the worst for the students, the worst for the taxpayers of Essex, and the worst for, I, I just, you know, I don't think it would ever get approved in Manchester, right? So I think that's, in my opinion, I think that's off, maybe, is that off the table with everyone? Like, a full cuts package?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. So now there's only two options, right? So the two options, instead of a compromise budget, I would be for, like, of, because we say rip the band-aid off, right? Like, so do a full budget, it corrects it. That's ripping the band-aid off for Essex. And then we have the time and the ability, not just one year, but like, probably two years, maybe even three years, to fix the challenges that we have here. Decide what we want to do as a district, who we want to be as a district, right? Because the bottom line is if both towns get together and decide that we need to reduce services because our towns can't afford the district that we put forward, then I'm going to afford that. I mean, it'll save me money, right? You know, whatever, if it makes sense and, you know, we have more time to have those discussions and fix the structural issues that have caused us to get here. So there you go.
So we're getting dangerously close to needing to move the vote. So I, I do want to take Jake's input here, though, and continue to just go around the table and see where are you currently with this proposal?
Okay, so a compromise is a give and take. I don't see a give and take in the, what we are calling the compromise budget. I think of it as a compromised budget. I think of it as a triage budget. It does not solve any problems. It, it's maybe stops the bleeding for maybe one year. We have been designing a budget to solve one town's problem for at least four years. I don't see what we, as the Town of Essex, as, as partners in this district, are giving in that give and take, in that compromise. What are we, as the Town of Essex, giving? I feel like we are making a lot of asks over and over and over again. I think that it is time for the Town of Essex to consider if we can afford to be a partner in this district. That is a fact that we need to be upfront about. If we can't afford it, that's fine. If we are really saying that our residents cannot afford the educational program provided by this district, we owe it to the district to be upfront about that and say, we are going to need to reconsider. So then, I think that we are spending a lot of time talking about what kind of school budget Essex wants to support and spending zero time talking about what kind of education Essex wants to support. And our primary responsibility as members of the school committee is to students. That is our role. I don't see the compromise budget, and I don't see the cuts budget as supporting our students or the educational program in a way that we have ever accepted. The compromise budget could possibly buy us time to get closer to that. But the way that it's presented, there is no give from the Town of Essex. I would actually rather us be spending money out of the district reserves on the fields, because those are a capital expense, than continue to spend our reserve money on our operating budget. At the same time, I understand the need for stability. Our teachers deserve stability. Our administrators deserve stability. Our students deserve stability. Everybody needs to get to a point of stability. I will not support any budget that cuts our program significantly. I do think that the compromise does something for our students, which is it buys them one more year of programs that are clearly very important to them. I know that it doesn't buy them those programs indefinitely. It buys them one year of that.
Well, so does the initial budget.
That's true. I won't support.
The process tonight of, like, legally what happens. Again, I'm not 100% sure, but.
I think that this process ends in a budget correction for Essex, no matter which direction it goes in. It either ends in a budget correction through a super town meeting. It ends in a budget correction next year, or it ends in a budget correction this year. Or it ends in Essex saying, we're sorry, we cannot afford to provide the education that Manchester expects for its students. And if that really is what we are saying as Essex voters, then.
If that's what we're saying, if, if, sorry, I'm going to go with what Jake has requested. So what are you in favor of?
I'm in favor of our full budget, I, sending it back. Of sending back our full budget. I am not opposed to our compromise budget. I think that it is a disservice to our district, though.
Fair, okay. Erica? We're not going to come back to you, we got you and Anna.
I, I, okay. I, I said what I thought was the most significant thing pushing me toward a compromise budget is simply the certainty and the predictability. I hear Chris's point, however, that it buys us only about six months of predictability. And sending back the original budget actually has an opportunity to buy us a couple of years of predictability, although it's not a certainty. So I'm, I'm really sitting here in my head trying to do a risk analysis between those two pieces. And that's about as much as I can say right now.
That's fair. Anna? Thank you.
Either way, it's not easy, but I support a compromise budget, just so to buy us another year and figure this out. I do think that, open up the regional agreement, looking at the apportionment racial calculation, that's always, always one of the solutions. I don't know if people knew, apportionment calculation into total population, enrollment, and also the home value. So the, right now, the apportionment calculation is already favoring Essex. So if we were to open it up, it's not like, like you mentioned before, be careful what you wish for. It's not necessarily going to fix the issue. So in my opinion, is, yes, we can look at all the different options. I do think that if this buys us another year, it will help with, you know, the collaboration spirit, trying to work, work together. Otherwise, if we have a hard stand, sure, we can just put forward the budget. We're going to delay it, the students, there's going to be chaos, there's still uncertainties still going on within, you know, as, as the teachers, the students. And at some point, we just need to, you know, find a way to stabilize it first and then figure things out. I do think that next year, budget process is the key. We need to do the three-entity budget together, lining it all up, five-year plan. And then know exactly what people are spending, and everybody's on the same page. That can be done.
Yeah, it can. Okay, so we are.
It's not a year. I mean, it's another fiscal year technically, right? But when I hear a year, I'm like, oh, that's a long time. No, no, we're not, Robert's rules, I need to say this. Like, it's not another year, it's six months. And it's actually less, right? I mean, you were on the finance subcommittee meetings, you know, we're on subcommittee when these collaboration meetings. How many meetings is it actually?
We don't have to do what we were doing before. That's what I'm saying. We need to have a new budget process, and we need to start right away.
It starts tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're going to move this vote at this point.
Can I, can I need to comment on something? I think you have to listen. I, I take Chris's point on the six months, because if we're going to be modeling million and a half reduction and restructuring budgets, that will cause instability, anxiety, and concern in the district. So just do with that what you will. But Erica asked a question early on, and I haven't really heard anyone speak to it as we talked about the compromise budget. And you're correct in, in what you said. I put forward the compromise for consideration with contingencies as a key component to them to get a verbal commitment at, at least, from the entities that we keep talking about needing to come together. But that piece and the fields piece seem to have dropped off. So could you talk to me a little bit about the value of the compromise if we're not getting any?
If we're not getting any even verbal guarantees that there's going to be some type of even support for a process?
Okay, yeah.
Can I, can I just say one thing on this?
Yes, I, I really want to invite Chair Chris and Perrine, so I'll just put you on notice. I'd like to ask you to comment on this part of the conversation.
I would love that, Jake.
So Pam, I think we're taking a leap of faith.
Based on what?
I think the challenge that we've discussed several times now is that there's no guarantee, even if we get a verbal statement saying, yeah, we'll play it, right? Even if we got a, even if we got an override, and we're not in the situation of taking reserves, we still need to change our process so that we don't continually repeat this, right? I've heard from those of you who've been on here for a long time, this is a multi-year challenge for us, right?
I'm going to push back on that. Why do we, you're saying we need to change our process. We don't have active engagement from our two partners to create a process. We did for many years. So I would, I will take inputs, we will reorganize things, we will try to make things more clear. But I just heard a readout of 10 years of history that tells you, we are stable, we are secure. You heard from external auditors, we are stable, we are secure, we are fulfilling our financial responsibilities. So I think we need to change the conversation about who needs to engage in this problem solving. And all I'm asking for is for the committee to comment on, what are you going to do for the district to get us a commitment to do this differently, instead of keep telling us to change this?
Agree, fully agree. And the us changing our process can be shifting this back. We have spent four years being grilled, watching you guys be grilled about every penny. shifting this back. We have spent four years being grilled, watching you guys be grilled about every penny. It's time to shift this back and say, what is?
Doing next year, right? But I don't think it has anything to do with this budget decision. I'll start doing that work next year no matter what.
I'm gonna invite Chairperson Perrine to to comment on on this. I like you because you're right here and you are the chair of the Board of Selectmen, if if you don't mind. Thank you.
Um, so as far as the field, the reason in the beginning why the Town of Essex could not bring that forward is because we knew, we didn't know the exact figure at that point, but with a two hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred dollar override that we're looking for, it would have been four hundred thousand dollars on top of that. So our override ask would have been six eighty-nine. We knew that, I mean, two eighty-nine didn't pass, six eighty-nine was not gonna pass. We get our certified free cash for the end of the year. It's why the Town of Essex tends to hold what we call Fall Town Meeting, but it's a special town meeting. And we do that intentionally because that's when we know what amount of money we have that we can use, which is your ANDD, it's our free cash. We also like the district. We have a capital plan. We model out uh, you know, all of our capital expenses. We know when we need a new fire truck, so we can plan for those expenses and we tend to go for special time meeting in the fall to fund all that stuff. So the very reason we said we cannot even entertain this conversation until the fall is because we don't know what our certified free cash is and we knew that we used all of our excess capacity to fund Article Four, just to accommodate the school budget as it was. As far as the mediation, we were clear.
Facilitation.
We're calling facilitation now, but on compromise budget. And so I want to make that clear because as the Finance Committee discussed it and was not in favor of it because of the word mediation and the Board of Selectmen discussed it and was not in favor because of very definitive definition of what mediation is. And I said, the Town of Essex, well, any municipality goes to town meeting. That is your decision maker. Your town meeting gets the the vote to make that final decision. In mediation, you are putting your trust in mediator that the outcome stands. When you're going for divorce and you go to court and you go to mediation, you don't go before the judge. That mediator gets to help you decide and that decision is final. Or finite, I suppose, maybe Erica correct me if I'm wrong. But um, so we said we can't support mediation because our voters get the final say. When Teresa brought it up, or I don't, somebody who was in the room last night and brought up that mediation doesn't have to be the word mediation, it can be facilitation. I think that's great. And one of the most important things I heard here tonight is that we want the two towns, Manchester Essex, to try to work together.
Yes.
We are, both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen are a thousand percent on the same page. We want all of our meetings to be in the same room at the same time, in real time, hearing the same information. We value the Manchester, both boards. Have to say, in full disclosure, I've been reaching out to Manchester now since the day after annual town meeting, trying to set something up. And it's been difficult to get that scheduled together. But um, in the last time we tried to have an all-boards meeting, it got canceled. Not, you know, I called the meeting and I did not cancel that meeting. So we've made the attempts to do this together and it's it's been difficult. So I say to you, Pam, I know that you're looking for commitment and I don't want to knock you one, but the problem we're having is that when it went to the Finance Committee last week, they frowned upon the word mediation because that was what was presented and they said, we we can't support mediation. And so when it came to the Board of Selectmen last night, we said, we can't support mediation because it goes to town meeting. Facilitation, I think that everyone is on board with or open-minded to or willing to work with. But I don't know, again, we're not in a meeting, so I can't comment about. We don't have a an agenda, an agenda to take that vote, so. And the other thing is, I think it's important, I I know you've talked about excess capacity, but I think it's important for you to know that we did, our taxes will go up because we did use all of our excess capacity. The way that the the laws work, you can't just ask for an override without going into your excess capacity and saying, well, we're gonna keep that in our back pocket for the future, so we have some extra money. It doesn't work like that. We we are all in here. And I don't think any of us are gonna tell you, we don't want to fund the fields. But we also, I can't stand before you and say, we're funding the fields. I'm gonna write you a check because it's gonna happen because it's still a town meeting vote. And that's the big problem.
Can I ask a question? Um, I guess that you don't know the free cash, how much it is till November. Um, is it possible that you can do a fairly accurate projection and know roughly how much that might you might have? And then looking at your capex that you know roughly that you might have if you have the money, four hundred thousand or three hundred some thousand with a field.
Part of the unknowns, and I'm I'm guessing Jeff Suwans probably on the line. I know he was dialing in, so he might be there.
We're not gonna get into the weeds on this.
No, no, that's fine. I'll give you what I can tell you and it may be better, the others are better. But some of our unknowns that we that are not predictable for us is things like Neil's tax. We we, you know, some years we get three hundred fifty thousand dollars in Neil's tax. That's a huge bonus. The last couple of years, we've had huge amounts of free cash that we had no thought we were gonna get. Last year, we budgeted on getting about a half a million dollars in free cash, and I don't remember the exact number, but we were close to maybe two million dollars. I mean, it was we had no expectation of that whatsoever. And the year before that, we came in over two million dollars. And those were just strange anomalies. It's not normally we we fall for free cash. And again, Ben and Jeff can speak better to that, but I don't know if we can do projections with things that are just our unknowns. We don't know what cherry shoot will look like. We don't know what Neil's tax will look like. This year, we finally had our um, retail marijuana facility come online, so we're gonna end up with some extra taxes from that. Then it's a little going, so I don't know what that looks like, but there are some unknowns for us.
So, hold on, I just want to make sure we don't get too lost in the weeds because we're gonna, this is exactly the work we're going to need to do after this, but.
You know, I appreciate that we're, I was really pushing this group to tell me why you're comfortable without assurances. That's all. And I understand.
And what are you, what are you looking?
I can, I can tell you my answer for that.
Things like Neil's tax and exile taxes.
Chris, I gotta, I gotta do this. We we can't right now. We we have to do that later. We have to do it later. We will do it, but we have to do it later.
But so here's, here is my hesitation. We have had commitments in the past from our Board of Selectmen and from our Finance Committee to support the school budget. And they have voted to support the school budget, but in practice, when it is being presented to the public, it has not felt supportive, right? So this, these gentleman's agreements have not come out in our favor in the past, only once.
Yeah. My, so my answer to that and to Pam, to your direct question, why do I feel any confident? I feel a sense of change in the tone shift, like I mentioned, but I'm not banking my decision on this based on whether or not I think Essex is gonna follow through with either of those things. I'm not. I'm making my decision on this on the idea that if we're gonna get Essex's answer to can we even afford to be in this district? I don't want this year's students and staff to have to pay for that while we wait for that answer. I want stabilization now for our district so we cannot hemorrhage teachers going through another long process and not get to a two-town town meeting that tears the culture apart within the school while we're trying to get to that answer. That's my answer to your direct question.
But the two-town meetings are gonna happen no matter what we do.
The the joint town meeting and then.
The joint town meeting is gonna be in the middle of summer when school's not in session. I don't know about you, but as a kid, as I don't know, as a kid, like, oh, oh. Give me like a month or two and I'm like, alright, man, you guys are friends, we're back, right?
Diego will remember.
Look, I know it's, I I'll tell you this right now, like, it'll, it'll honestly be even more awkward because you're gonna come to the first day of school knowing that the kids from Manchester forced a budget down the Town of Essex throat hypothetically. And I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a positive thing for the culture of the school. And like, I know, like, you might, like, kids' parents will be talking about it. All my friends are on the Facebook pages. Kids from Essex are on Essex Facebook.
You gotta get off Facebook, man.
It's not gonna be good.
I think it's really interesting to sit here with four brand new within the last year committee members. And while Jake, I agree with you. Don't, don't write us off. We have tried to do our homework, but the one thing we don't have is experience in this room. And I I am influenced by Chris and Kate saying, you know, we have a very, perhaps a rosy view of how this coming budget process will work because right now we're energized and we think that we can make this happen and this year will be different. But Kate and Chris are shaking their heads and saying.
It may not be on it for all the time.
It's not just that an override next year, if that's what we're working towards, is even worse for Essex taxpayers.
Yeah, that, I mean, that is a little bit.
We strive to six hundred thousand dollar.
Alright, but. To give it a year.
Second. All in favor of moving the question? Oh, moving the question. Yeah, they're in favor. Yeah, okay, that's that's four. That's a majority. The motion on the floor is to accept the compromise budget as is. This is gonna be by roll call. Anna?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Kate?
No.
Erica?
No.
I'm a yes.
Alright, we're done.
Not everything, we're not done. Not everything's gonna be consensus. A full, a full consensus, and we have to know that. This is hard stuff we're working through. It's not ideal. This doesn't solve the big problem. It buys us some time to do it and preserves the program as much as possible while we do it. It's not ideal. I appreciate everyone speaking openly and honestly um, from the public and from the table. Um, we will have next steps forthcoming with that. The the word will go back out, but before we finish, folks, we reorganized the agenda to put reorganization at the end.
I I make, I'd make a motion that we find a time in the next couple of weeks to reconvene.
I, we need to put this to bed.
You guys can, you can do.
We need to put this to bed. We have a lot of work to do. If it's not me, it's not me. If it's, but we need to put this to bed. We we need to move forward with a stable sense of leadership and understanding on this. Pam, do you have a preference on this moving for, like, handling this now versus?
We're all here. We're all sitting in this.
We're all sitting right here.
I don't.
You don't have an opinion?
I don't get to weigh in on it. It's not my.
Process, that isn't part of my, we're sitting in this room. Here's my concern. My concern is we set a date next week or the week after. And what happens between now and then is we have a whole bunch of outside posturing and and pushing and and everything else. And I think that's what we don't need right now. We don't need outside influence. We need this committee to do the work of this committee.
Can I, just, just for clarification to wrap the discussion? Um, that's, at one point, we were supposed to do superintendent evaluation and goals. Do we need to do that in the year or second? Can that be done outside?
That's not on our agenda.
Not tonight.
It's not on our agenda. It is my exact point, right? We're gonna need another meeting for that.
We can do that over the summer we talked about, right?
So this August, we're talking about?
Our next meeting is not until like August eighth or whatever, right?
We we, we don't need a full meeting to do that. We have all of the information. If we want to have a meeting to have her report out on end-of-year goals before we do her evaluation, then we will need to do that. That's, that's up to us.
We have one item left on the agenda and we have been talking about whether or not we're gonna do that item for probably the amount of time that we would have spent doing that item.
Alright, so there was a motion to delay. There was a second to to put this off to another date. Any discussion?
I think you're here. Might as well just deal with it.
Alright, so, all in favor of, all in favor of delaying this to another date?
Yeah.
All opposed? That's four. Okay.
Alright.
I'm sorry. We just, we just do this. Okay. So Pam, we reach back. Thank you because you have longer arms than I do.
No problem. Certainly, I should put Starburst. So entertaining nominations for uh, Chair.
Can you first tell us, is there any, are there any bylaws or is there a tradition surrounding? Does the Chair typically move from town to town? And how many years does a Chair serve? And is any of this in bylaws or is it just by, by practice or by vote or by what?
Bylaw, no. Tradition, all over the place. There was early years, I think they swapped year to year. During my tenure, I think Linda Crosby served for three to four consecutive years. I could be off on that. Um, Annie served, people served for chunks of time. It's never, it's not a hard pass world to pass it back and forth. The only thing that's been a tradition is that there's always, if the Vice Chair, if the Chair is one town, the Vice Chair is the other town. And they act as the point people for those two towns. So no rules, lots of tradition, but ju- tradition is mainly that it's balanced and not that there's any um, any specific term limit. Which is why in our policies, we do reorganize each year.
My institutional memory is that we were doing two years at some point. I nominate Teresa to finish out those two years. I think that we are at a point where we need stability in relationships and um, stability in our work. And I believe that Teresa has laid the foundation to continue that. I'm concerned that if she did not continue as Chair, we would lose a sense of stability that we have established with our administrators, with our teachers and with our students, which I think are our primary stakeholders.
Other nominations?
I nominate someone for a different position or are we only taking nominations for?
Only for just Chair first.
I will nominate myself to let me think about this because I actually, um, the, when I came in earlier tonight, the way that I think about this, I versus how I think about it now is a little bit different. So when people ask me to be the Chair, um, it's because my, my budget management experience, and right now we're in kind of fiscal and financial management crisis. I personally think that I don't have any issues with, you know, with you leading it, but I I don't want to be the Chair, nor do, I I I know, I don't want any part of it. I what I feel like that I need to be the Chair is the only reason of why I feel that I need to step up when people ask me to, is I feel uh, there's a need for professionalizing our budget process. And the the way to professionalize how we manage our governance at this board. Yes, it would be more stabilizing to have, you know, Teresa to continue to the second year. But we also have not been stabilizing for the past three or four, you know, years when Essex was chairing. So sometimes when a situation like this, in government or non-government, profit or non-profit or even sports, we change leadership. Not because we are against Teresa, not because we are pro Anna. We still need to work together. But my specialty is budget management. Use me because I can help truly. But if I can't help in any other way, I'm more than happy to do that, too. But I'm just saying that even if I was Chair, I I would not be, uh, my approach is very different. I wouldn't be doing everything myself. I want everybody to involve. Like, you know, for example, Teresa, I would still love because because you're so good at connecting with people and communicating, you know. Let's delegate that. And there are people, maybe you want to be um, talking to the the school council and things, delegate that. But my goal is the budget management process, and that's why some people ask me to do that. And also the change leadership would give um, the entire process a fresh and neutral perspective. And that's what I feel I can contribute. Not to challenge, not to be disagreeing with anybody. That's purely my um, my, my goal.
Do I get to speak or no? Because I've been nominated. Because she nominated herself, so I'm, I don't really know how this works.
Okay, you kind of stopped halfway through. You're like, let me think about this. I'm not sure.
Are you nominating yourself? Yes, you you said I'm nominating myself.
Is there, is there a way for?
Okay, we're being told we need seconds, Pam.
Going to ask for is a a motion on either nomination and then a second.
I see. Okay.
Are we, are we?
So I have to make a, I have to make a motion on my nomination.
I would move it to a motion and see if there's a second for it.
I motion to nominate or I motion to elect?
No. So do we have a second? Sorry.
So you moved to elect?
Say, this is a new, this is new territory.
We don't usually have challenged.
So is there a second to Kate's nomination of Teresa?
Yes.
Is there a second to Anna's nomination?
Yes.
For for purposes of discussion, if it can't be the same, I will second that.
So now we're in discussion and I do get to say something?
I don't have any rules.
You're not, you're not Chair, so you're equal to all of us.
Yeah. Um, so again, I think that there, I I think it's important to, for me to just say here, as I said at the beginning, I will advocate for consistency right now. At the same time, I've seen last year, we've, we've come a long way as a full committee here, and I think there's a lot. and I think there's a lot that can be done differently from the chair role. I think there's a lot that can be done differently from, from all of our roles. I think this is a time to elevate all of us as a group and to actually be able to utilize the specific skills that we each bring to the table in a group atmosphere. That's learning that I've had through this. My, my, my real I'd like to say that I'm advocating for stability and consistency and also the idea that budget management isn't the only part of this, which I know you know, and I, I think there's room for both. But the fact is that the chair role, for the past year, there's been a lot of, a lot of what I've done has been in a protective role, protecting the integrity of the committee. I don't mean integrity meaning our, our motivations. I mean, the processes that we follow and making sure that we all, since we are all pretty new to these processes, are working within the rules and within the bounds and understanding our scope. And now that we have a better sense of that, we have the ability to delegate more. We have the ability to work as a full body more effectively. I do feel confident that that is a wise move forward. I also feel very strongly that, that if I do remain as chair, that next year it does need to go to a Manchester person. I really feel that way. But I, I really would like to continue forward. I've done a lot of work this year, and I have built those relationships. Pam and Avi have a lot of work ahead of them with new key administrators. They know how this committee works in this configuration. I think it's worth giving them the time and space to do the work they know with, within the bounds of what we're already familiar with for one more year. After that year, I do think we definitely need to, to make that shift back to Manchester.
Can I ask you, kind of similar to the questions that we asked for the budget, how do we know next year will be different? Considering the past three or four years, you know, we had the same two-year chairs in Essex. We have one-year chair in Essex, and it is, we are the worst that it can be right now, like considering the tension and the divide in this, in the community. And so how do we know next year will be better if we don't change the leadership?
Well, so I would put, I would put two things out there. Number one, take from the example of the Board of Selectmen. Ruth has been serving about the same amount of time I have, actually, and they voted to keep her in as chair as well, recognizing that stability for the committee means stability moving forward, and they're under enormous constraints as well. And I think that the, the last two years, keep in mind, when you're talking about like Sarah, when she was chair, those were the COVID years. That was chaos. That was, that was a lot to put on anyone. And this past year has been a lot. Whoever, serving moving forward, yes, we have an enormous amount to do, but we've had a lot on our plate, and I think that it's, it's worth, I think it's worth allowing me to keep doing the work that I'm doing for consistency purposes. Go ahead, Jake.
So, so Teresa, I'm very appreciative of the work that you've done, and I hear your comment about stability and the need to kind of carry forward, particularly the work you've kind of done to engage the community and whatnot, and I'm confident that you would do that next year. My goal for today is really like, is really about next year. How do we set ourselves up for productive collaboration process, really, with the towns?
Yeah.
And so given that we've acknowledged that the system is broken, without knowing what that system will be next year, and we have to figure out how to, how to define that, my concern is that the if you put the same people in the same room trying to solve the same problems and expect a different result, that's, that's a little bit what worries me about stability. So, you know, I appreciate Anna, your, your comments, and I agree that, you know, you've, you've articulated the relationship well, and your experience with the budget and your finances is really a key piece that we need here. Assuming the system stays the same, because we haven't talked about what an alternative looks like, I am concerned about putting the same people in the same room again. If we are truly going to try something different, where we don't have you as the representative, at least from the Essex side, we're all representing, then I can, I can see that.
That's precisely what I'm suggesting.
Okay, so.
Suggesting what?
That, that it's not chair and co-chair as the sole representatives of the collaboration process.
Yes, I'm suggesting that this entire group needs to come together. We all need to know the ins and outs of the budget. We all need to know the constraints of what our towns are facing. We all need to be part of this right now. I believe that truly.
So if I hear you correctly, what you're saying is exactly what Ruth said is going to be very difficult, which is full committee with town collaboration in public meetings.
And difficult doesn't mean impossible.
Doesn't mean impossible, but I'll, I'll, I'll just say, let's keep that open for the moment. I'm not sure. We're not here to decide that right now. But maybe a way to hedge against that, and Anna, you're not, you're not conveying a thrilled sense of wanting to be chair. So, so, so maybe, and I'm putting this out knowing that we're not taking the vote on vice chair yet, but, but maybe if you would be willing, Anna, to be considered for vice chair, that would bring the mix of both of you together in representing us as a school committee.
I'm not, I'm not com, yeah, I'm not commenting on vice chair right now. I'm not. If we're wrestling, I'm going full in, and I will take any one of you down. On the wrestling?
You know I'm gonna win.
I beg you to vote.
Just because I work out.
So.
Just because she works, oh, we're getting, it's getting late.
It's getting late. I do, I, Jake, I, I hear your point every time we talk about, like, your tenure on school committee and the, the knowledge that you gained through experience, I, and I don't want to discount it. I also feel as though in my last four months on school committee, I have learned more than probably the first year combined, just from going through the process again, right? I feel like the first time, you're sort of just getting used to it. The second time, you get, I, me, sorry, not you, I was able to be more actively involved and learn more from it, right? So there's two ways that I think we gain the knowledge to do this work. One is through experience, through sitting back and watching, and then the other one is through the trainings that we're required to do. And so I guess I would lean on Teresa's experience, and I would hope that both Teresa and Anna would be leaning on their trainings.
Can I ask? Can, can I ask, because I think the question that I have and others have is, should we ship the leadership back to Manchester? So can I ask the Manchester people to see how we feel if we want to ship it back?
Can I, have you done the training? Have you done the mask training?
Oh, we're signing up June.
So you haven't done the training yet?
Next Saturday.
Saturday.
So you haven't done the, the training, the first year training?
Not yet.
Well, to be, to be fair though, because I feel like that's raising a very, sounds like Anna's been dismissive of the training. There have been two trainings offered since we started, both of which have been multi, you know, right, along with them here. We did not have the option to do it remote, and we did not have the option to do it locally. So I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there that it wasn't Anna's relinquished. And, but I will go, I will go on to say further something that you said, which is that there is a learning curve here. My God, and Anna, you do have really deep budgetary experience that is, can't compare to what any of us have. But there's a learning curve in the way we work as a committee, in the way we work with our member towns, and I do think that experience has a role. I also think, to answer your question, that leadership should transition back and that there's a perception issue as far as that's concerned, that even though we're talking about what works for our committee, we're also talking about how we are perceived by the public. And so there, there needs to be a plan for leadership to transition back. So I know I cut you off, but I didn't want to suggest that those of us who haven't had a chance to take the training, we are going to train.
I know. I appreciate that. I take the point. I know that it is inconvenient and that it is lengthy, but I think that it's valuable, and I think that if we are considering the skills and the knowledge that we need moving forward, that it is a point to consider. I also agree with a plan for moving forward. I take Teresa's point that the chair should absolutely shift back to Manchester after this year. I also have concerns about the perception the other way. This very critical time, I feel like Essex is our more, I don't know how to put this diplomatically at this hour at night, but it's, yes, we are in a very fragile situation in Essex, and I feel as though we are a very small town, and we have, we already know that we are outnumbered, and being in this position and then having somebody from Manchester as that voice, I feel like that will not be perceived well in our small fragile town. Does that make sense?
Very late people.
Should we give more credit to people of Essex?
No, I just, no, I think that there is a very real, it, it is.
I have more. It doesn't matter.
Any other comments? Any other discussion?
So when we move this vote, which vote are we moving?
Yeah, we have two on the table here.
Well, it's going to be all in favor of one. All in favor of one.
So I would say.
You could also just straw poll it and then vote. You get the same way, no matter what you do.
Yeah, we could vote, and if the first person fails, then we will vote on the second person. If they pass, then that's it, or if they fail, or I mean, if everyone's decided on whether we're going to vote, then I think we're good, right? Doesn't matter.
I would say if all the Manchester people are okay with not shifting the leadership back to Manchester this year.
With the understanding that that is our intention for next year, and I think that it's important to state that in an open meeting.
With my historical knowledge, I would not recommend shifting the chair position back to a Manchester member.
This year, you mean?
Correct.
Right now?
Yes.
Right now, of course, yes.
I would say, given what, how it transpired, and I do think that the reason why I, I felt originally, I know that now I'm changing my mind, originally, I feel like I, we need a chair to be leading the budget process is because you were being such pushback from you before. But now I do feel like you're much more open. You are, you want to elevate other members that have the skillset to do what they need to do. I am open. I don't want a chair. I am open to you, to, you know, working with you, more than happy to. And I do think with our skillset, we can make it happen.
I'm sorry if you feel that way, but you may wish to mute at the moment.
And, and listen also, like if.
I have no idea who that was.
Teresa was in a very contested vote in Essex, and it did not pass, but Teresa's still got 11. I don't know exactly what that means, but that'd be a bad thing.
Um, if you feel like you can, if you can, definitely allow me, allow me to help a lot with the budget process.
Yeah. What I am saying specifically is that the entire group as a whole needs to work together. We all have to work together on this. Like, we all become the group that does the budget process. And yes, you will have a voice, you will have a voice, you will have a voice. I won't even need to ask. And keeping in mind that in the past, we were doing things in a different way. Yeah. So.
With that, I'm. Okay. All in favor of.
The nomination? Again.
I again nominate Teresa as chair.
Second. All in favor of Teresa being chair for another year.
Where's the gamble?
While you're. Yes.
Hold on, can I just, before we do it super quick?
Do we need a vice chair now?
Yeah. We need a vice chair. I think we can put off other. Opening nominations for vice chair.
I'm a lady, Anna.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Can I just ask, Chris?
Are you a person? Are you really not? Because I'm sitting here ready to nominate you, but if you're not going to accept a nomination, I need to know. Okay.
Hello?
Okay.
If someone wants to nominate me, then that's fine. We can have a discussion about it.
We could do this till tomorrow.
Okay, I'm going to do, I'm going to nominate Chris. He's the current vice chair. I nominate Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I don't, I am fine. I want you two to decide what the best is. And I, again, I advocate for stability. I also think we're all going to be in a competitive position here.
We're not offended.
Yeah, so, so listen, if you're talking about the budget stuff, Anna, I did not get, I feel like I didn't get involved in the budget stuff at all this year until the very end, and it's 100% correct that I have. But I wasn't on the finance subcommittee, like, that's kind of job of the final subcommittee, right? Like, I was busy on the negotiation subcommittee, saving this district and both our towns millions of dollars. So, you know, I don't know, but like.
I think there's something really to consider here.
So if you want to be vice chair, cool, no, whatever.
Well, before we do that, so here's the thing that matters.
Go for it.
Here's the thing, here's a thing that matters. Vice chair is the person who's going to speak at the town meeting for Manchester. So that makes a difference here, that this is the person who's going to be presenting for Manchester. When the next town meeting comes up, so.
Go to town meeting in Manchester and tell them that we top program. It's going to be you up here saying it.
So that aside.
Okay.
I do think, now go back to what we're saying. Knowing what is the path forward is not only the relationship that you have and the stability, but a key piece of the budget. And I do think, well, it's not like I want to be vice chair. But I do think that for us, and now that I do feel like you say that, we feel like there's a shift. I do feel like there's a shift between us two, and I do think that us working together.
I, I have no doubt that that's the case. Again, I'm just being very clear to the Manchester reps here. I want you guys to understand that a primary function of this role, because that can take place anyway, and I'm fine however this goes, but I feel like, to me, I need you four Manchester reps to decide who it is that you want speaking as the spokesperson in your annual town meeting. That is, that is, that is a primary function here. You are the person who ends up.
I'll get up to you three. I don't know. Do you do a good job this year or not? Whatever.
You can delegate. So I, I do. I mean, if we're, if we're going to say that everything turns on.
Yeah.
Technically, we can do whatever we want.
Right. I don't.
Anna wants to do it, Chris, he sounds, he don't do it anymore. Just go down. You should have done this.
I believe I had said that.
Okay, move the vote.
Move the vote. All in favor of Anna as vice chair? All in favor of Chris as vice chair?
He's half.
I'm just in the stability. I know we can do this either way. Yeah.
Reserving four votes for Anna, we're good.
Okay, yeah, okay. So have chair, we have a vice chair. I would like to propose that we cross that. I would like to propose that we cross subcommittee reassignments until.
Who's not?
Yeah, and the reason I mean that is because A, with all of the budget stuff going on, again, this is all hands on deck here. There are, there aren't any private meetings where just a couple people go and meet into those things. So what we're talking about is waiting till August meeting. Not yet. So we could table.
Is there a need add second?
What's the, how about your evaluation?
So I don't know what the summer list looks like. No, it's long. Long. Take some of that and a normal stuff. We are not gonna touch that summer list, nor this subcommittee for hours. And we have substantive things to think, we are on town collaboration and budget process and all that. Can't wait until August.
I, I don't think we have the luxury of saying we're not gonna be meeting until the local market state. I, I, I think we should probably, I don't know. We have this whole process happening, we're going to have to be, it's just not necessarily.
Um, are we open to the possibility of remote? The exception of our workshop?
I, I think we need to entertain.
I prefer in person.
I'm personally not in a position to start opening up a calendar, I mean, today, right now. We could do the Doodle poll to find options. And if we.
Or Erica can't do Doodle, we do any other.
Whatever this, whatever the mechanism is to get input, whatever the mechanism to get input, if we can find.
We consider dates.
And I'm not just talking a two hour, one time thing for August. There's some substantive work in my part here. And I'm personally open to making a remote to allow for higher participation or a wider variety of options.
Right. So for you to take offline scheduling. Yeah, it's all right. Is there something?
We have a.
Yeah. We'll have that.
And I want to anticipate if you want to buy a side, which is. The likely mood to gather for a town meeting at the end of. So have a check in, discussion of, don't know what they're going to do. They may decide three to 45 days, I, we don't know. Either of. I mean, it's open ended, it gets passed to them and then they need to establish the need. Sense of what the Manchester primary is.
The one that turns a vaguely sunscreen changed what the original budget was.
The advice, but what Pam is saying is except for.
Can't force on. If they just don't, then it's accepted.
Yes, but it's a 45 day waiting period. So if they don't, we won't have a budget.
Yeah.
My hope is that they would have a meeting at the end of. One of the, that's behind the top five. It's the wait period.
What we have right now is scheduling, but we need a little bit more information about that.
I think there's also some capacity concerns and that, so what's the expectation? I know you don't want to stay any longer, but what, we're adding meetings? Are they two hours, are they four, are they eight? What's the expectation from us for deliverable? Onboarding and we're gonna be tied now, now that we enter June. Next two weeks with staff management, then any other budgetary. I don't think it stops this.
I agree.
As we're into the line, what is it we're hoping?
I just also think it's too late at night for us to decide. That's my, just my personal opinion, we're, we're reaching a point of. Okay. Were you, did you have? So you can't even, would you post one in advance? That would be. Because then you only need two weeks from that. So if you were so inclined, you could potentially pull this up before the end of this year. That are, I mean, we want to have this actively approved by the end of June to avoid that cliff. That's the difference is we end up in, in the 112 or we don't.
But technically, I know what the, I know what Teresa said. But technically, do we automatically go on 112?
Actually, why? Or 112 is fine.
We already have, we, we do have an approved budget in there.
No, yeah. So this group. After your. Yes. Okay, so based on the facts we have on hand. You're right. Based on the facts of?
Yeah.
At this point, I would. Desi, that we are likely. Have communicated then for all the different reasons. But right now, as things change, they're very welcome. We would not be having, we would not have a. But. It could.
Without a great.
Change. So if we do a 112 budget for 112 here, does that change?
How many members?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we don't have a budget.
But so then it's our next fiscal year's budget only for 11 months because we used a 112 for the cover. Okay, so we get it.
Got it.
But it does make.
Good in advance.
Anyone, everyone, give it where they're going.
I'd like to reconsider.
Well, I may, I feel good about.
No, no, no.
Just wanna share, that is what you make considerable. Theory of compromised budget is that like. So with one of the, we can still give them some greater certainty, but now they're not officially wait, we've allowed, let's call it something, you know, that faith to rescind anyway. So, but we, so I guess.
Can we not maintain current staffing with the 112 for one month?
This would be a lovely opportunity for Essex to.
This is in play no matter, let's just, yeah, even under the compromised budget because of the timing of budget normalization, you don't have the budget, you don't have the resources to commit. So basically we'll provide layoff documents to everyone on the cut budget.
Right.
Conversation I thought coming out of compromised budget would be, I level up support for the compromised budget.
Yeah.
Town meetings to happen by end of June.
Yeah.
Giving you this piece of paper, you need to do what you need to do for family. But I'm very confident, I'm gonna call you on June 26th, 23rd. That pushes this up now until.
So we need to make a nice. I did not realize that, so this is an ask that we need to make.
Would have done the same thing, like you could have told people. The process, the process.
Yeah. Yeah, I think people might be.
This would be a great show of faith.
Anyway, I'm not, all I'm making you aware of is that people are, you're going to hear about the committee letters. That's always been part of it.
That was always part of it. What I wasn't. Yes, I wasn't clear on the idea that. That there was, that there was a need for commitment to hold a town meeting before the end of June. That didn't come up in conversation. Same. So I think that that's a conversation that's probably already taking place. I think that that would be helpful, really help for us. That, that might be the deal that we've been looking for.
School committee comment.
I think you need to come in late.
It is school committee, it is school committee comment. And I would like to invite Diego to say something.
I don't know what I think. I, I came into the meeting really not supporting one specific budget and I kind of came in with an open mind. And I think probably going before the meeting, I have to say, probably like most of you, I literally back my, back and forth in my head like a million times. And I think that like, when you look at it, like there really is no good solution. I think either way, like, there is gonna have to be some problem solving with Essex. And I feel that either way, like, there's always gonna be some sort of like deficit in the budget. With that being said, I think being optimistic, I think that the compromise could potentially be good because like, you're banking on town of Essex is gonna work with you. And like, I think, I don't know, it's good to be optimistic sometimes and everything works out. And I think in terms of like, just looking like purely what's best for the students, like, it's obvi- like, obvious, like cutting teachers versus like, cutting positions. This is not, it's really obvious like what the decision is. That being said though, I think like, I don't know if you said it, but like the work starts tomorrow.
Yeah.
Like upcoming year. And I guess the suggestion I would give to all of you, and it seems like brought this up, but look at the regional agreement, look at the apportionment agreement. Because like, that is where the problem is, not the budget. Look at that. And I think you really have to have difficult conversations to say, you really need to change what's going on at this time. In terms of the leadership reorganization, I was happy to see the outcome of that. I think that this woman is gonna make a really good chair for another year.
Well, like I do, like, that's just like a genuine, like, personal, like, I think you're gonna do a really good job. Like, I'm happy about that. And that being said, I think it's really good that you're gonna be the Vice President, the Vice Chair, because. I'm confused, Vice Chair, whatever, Vice Chair. And I think that's really good because you'll be able to see the work that she's doing. And then when eventually it seems like you want to switch to Manchester, potentially, however it goes. However it goes, if you happen to take that role hypothetically, you would obviously be working a lot more, or it would work out better. But don't forget about the problem that still exists. That's all I'm gonna say, like, take the small, I guess, I don't even know victory, but win now, but. That's my message. Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure, my. When you need college recommendations, you know who to come ask.
Any other school committee comment?
So what's the next step? Are people gonna follow up with this? See when the.
Yeah. We have to put out the letter, official letter to the two towns, right? Modifying that. I will be in touch with Chairperson Friday. Tomorrow, we'll, we'll go back and forth. We'll, we'll see what we can figure out, right? And I will let the committee know. I'll keep the committee updated. I think they've already scheduled.
They scheduled.
Yeah.
They've scheduled their town.
It would be. Contagious if it did not have to do with teachers.
So.
Let me clarify, they are getting laid off.
That's the June 15th deadline, we always knew we were hitting.
I think it makes a difference in terms of their security, confidence, anxiety, whether or not we wrap up by end of June or.
The hassle of being dealing with PPS.
That was, yeah. Any other school committee comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? It is. It's 11:11.
Oh, no.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, it's just right here. Yeah, of course. No, I, I hundred percent, I totally agree, I think.